Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 5:30. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So, we need to amend tonight's agenda. The following changes are renaming K3 to Financial Transparency and adding employee 10.9.23B to executive session.
So moved.
Sorry.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Therefore, we now need an approval, or a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now we need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061B.
I will move to enter into executive session per Idaho Code 742061B.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Vane?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. Alright, so we've come out of executive session. We have no post-executive-session action items. Moving into announcements, I'd just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are business board meetings. They are held in public. They are not public board meetings. And that the board is governed by Idaho Code Title 74 and Title 33, Chapter 5, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or IDAPA, and we follow our district policies. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussions or conversations take place. All input will be received within a three-minute time limit. We do ask that the input be respectful and civil. Address the board, not the audience. Address issues, not persons. And refrain from applause, snickers, whispers, quiet comments, etc., as this interferes with the due process. Alright, we do have some accolades.
I have a couple of announcements.
Oh, yes, please.
Just wanted the board to know and our community that Timberlake High School was, we were just notified, Timberlake High School is the third, uh, ranked top, thank you, ranked third, thank you for that, think of the word. For all public high schools in the state of Idaho for their ELA proficiency scores. And then also, we have the highest-ever all IRA scores across the district. We had some grade levels that were coming in at 77% proficient at certain buildings, but across all buildings, we're higher than some of our schools have scored in the spring, ten years past. So we're over 50% proficient everywhere. Typically, we're down 30s, 30s to 40s, and a lot of 60s and some 70s. So that's due in large part to the work that is being done in all six elementary schools with a really strong focus on foundational reading skills.
Great.
Any other announcements?
No.
Moving on to accolades. Matt Smith from the Rathrum Trading Post has donated first-grade reading bunnies for the past several years. And this year, he donated 362 bunnies to our first graders, so that every first grader would have a bunny. And this is a book, this is a reading.
It's a reading incentive program.
Incentive program.
So for every 10 books that the kids read, they earn something special for their bunny or they get to do something special with their bunny. And it's highly motivating. When my girls were in school, it was dogs, puppies, and they both still have their bunnies.
That's awesome.
So it's a, it's a big deal. And, you know, Matt is the, here in Rathrum, that he, so he's very generous and donated bunnies for all of our district schools, not just those of our own.
Yes, the entire district.
Not only that, but he sponsors the monthly student of the month programs in publicity. I would ask that another, thanks be written on behalf of the board
Did you ask him? Did you send him something?
I think we did.
Yeah, sent him a gift or some of the last.
And then for Mountain View, they delivered baskets of sunshine to, looks like the police department, our first responders, dispatch, fire, police. They're anxious. I think that is phenomenal.
Yep, everything, everything was yellow because it was all about sunshine.
That is awesome. Do we have any public input for tonight?
Anybody?
Did you? Alright, so we'll hear from Heather Erickson regarding Applied Music for High School Credit: Extended Learning Opportunity, Idaho State Statute Title 33, Chapter 64.
Hello, my name is Heather Erickson. I'm president of North Idaho Music Teachers Association. I'm here to propose an Applied Music for High School Credit program. This program has been in other states I've worked in, including Nevada and Colorado. Many other states have implemented this opportunity for students, including Washington and New York, as far as my research. Idaho State Legislature Title 33, Chapter 64 already has in place allowing this opportunity. It's being called the Extended Learning Opportunity, which allows students to receive credit for outside-of-school curriculum, such as what I'm proposing today. Applied Music for High School Credit allows high schoolers to receive credit for their work outside of school in private music lessons with certified instructors. This program requires teachers hold a current certification under a nationally certified teacher of music. This is a rigorous program, assessed and verified through Music Teachers National Association each year. Certification promotes the highest standards in music teaching through continued educational advancement. Students have to show their hard work through weekly lessons, daily practice, annual recitals, annual written theory exams, ear training exams, sight-reading exams, technique exams, and performance exams, judged by highly esteemed outside sources, who are usually professors at nearby colleges. This program empowers parents in school choice, giving them their ability to offer their children outside-school opportunities tailored to their individual students. Applied Music Credit Program is outside-school hours and is supplemental to school music classes like band, orchestra, and theater. Teachers can be assured of a more consistent year-round program. Extended Learning Opportunity is already implemented in a nearby school district called McKay School District, number 182. If you would like more information, I have packets I can give to each of you.
Alright, thank you.
May I give these packets to you?
Sure.
Yes. And you can look into them further. And if you would like to contact me, I have my email, which is heatherericksonstudios@gmail.com.
Alright.
May I pass these to, is there, oh, just around? Thank you for hearing me today. It might run out here. If I counted correctly, about one more.
Thank you so much.
Are you for it?
Thank you.
Can I have a paper that you're back?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to reports. First up is the financial audit, I believe, being presented by Tony.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for having me up here again this year. Just another quick introduction. My name's Tony Matson. I'm with Hayden Ross and Department of Special Audit for the district. The big news is, or the news, big news, is we issued a clean opinion on the financial statements. So we see the financial statements are fairly presented, are fairly stated as presented. We didn't have any, during a fieldwork, we were up here in September. I just wanted to take a second of Jessica and Chelsea for answering all of our questions and working through us on all the numbers. It's always, it's always difficult to come in mid-year and not be there for the full year and then end up having to answer questions about, well, what about this and how this happened? And how did this go? So I just wanted to give them a little shout-out and tell them thank you for their attitude and their, and I appreciate all their efforts, so. As part of the financial statements, so we obviously audited the financial statement numbers. And the district was also required to have a, what we call a single audit. And I explained this in the past, but just like a quick, quick update on a single audit. It's a compliance audit that's required when the district has spent more than $750,000 of federal award money. Last year, the district spent just over $7 million of federal awards. That was down a little bit year-over-year from fiscal year '22. But a lot of this is related to the COVID or the SFR dollars, Education Stabilization Fund. The district's been receiving those for the last couple of years. Historically, the district has spent about $3 million of federal funds, so these last couple of years have been elevated with just $7 million just this last year. We didn't have any findings on the single audit, so a lot of that is more compliance-related. Did the reports get filed? Do you have internal controls to ensure that the dollars are being spent accurately and on the right things? We came in and we did a, we picked two programs. We reviewed Title 1 this last year. Had about $807,000 of expenses. And then we also looked at the SFR, SFR dollars. And we've done that the last couple of years. It's just such a large amount of the actual expenditures of federal awards that we pretty much required to look at it. Last year, there was $3,382,000 of total COVID or SFR-related dollars that the, that the school spent, so. Quite a bit. Today, I wanted to go through the major funds of the districts and just give you a quick snapshot of the results of operations. So we're going to go through the general fund, you know, the debt service, and then the capital projects fund. I'm going to start with the general fund. General fund started the year with a fund balance of $8,987,000. Total revenues in fiscal year '23 were $42,128. Total expenditures were $46,607,000, resulting in an ending fund balance of $4,508,000, which was a reduction of $4,478,000 this last year. So that was the end, that was the overall, big-picture result of the general fund. Looking at the last 10 years' worth of operating expenses and revenues, just I would take, like to take a look. Just gives you a little bit of sense of where the district has been. Revenues have been greater than expenses in seven of the last 10 years. This last year fiscal year '23 actually represented the first, first loss in the general fund since fiscal year '15. So fiscal year '15, since then, the district has been building up their fund balance over the last, last few years and then utilized some of it this last year. If we look at what that actually meant in terms of the fund balance for the district, this is fund balance graph here. And I just want to kind of explain some of the numbers just because it can be a little busy. The light green numbers represent the district's fund balance policy. So fund balance policy did change in fiscal year 2020. So if we look at sort of the right side of this, you'll see, maybe some people can see it fine. Effectively, the district's policy is to maintain an unassigned fund balance equal to 8.33 to 16.66% of expenditures. 8.3 and 16.6 basically represent one month to two months' worth of operating expenses as fund balance. So that's what that range is, those light green lines. The, the blue line, the top line, represents where the fund balance actually has been over the last 10 years. You can see back in 2015, there was actually a negative fund balance in the general fund of $143,000. Since that time, up until the beginning of this last year, the fund balance of the general fund had increased $9.1 million and topping out at the beginning of this fiscal year '23 at the $8,987. Although there was the basically $4.5 million loss in the general fund this year, that ending fund balance, $4,508,000, still within the fund balance policy of the district. Not where it was, obviously, but it, the 4.5 is landing just above that one-month line, one-month amount. Put another line on here just because it provides a little bit more information to the board. I put what's called the unassigned fund balance. So the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year was $3,146. The difference between those two is about $1,362,000. So when you look at your fund balance, it can be made up of different, different parts, okay? It's all, that $4.5 million is all unrestricted dollars. But it comprises of a $500,000 prepaid expense, so technically, it's non-spendable. So that's how it's shown on the financial statements, is non-spendable. And then there is also shown in the fiscal, in the financial statements, an assigned balance of $869,000 this year. What that represents is the amount of the current year fund balance that is being used to balance the fiscal year '24 budget. So if you were to look at fiscal year '24 budget, your total revenues are X, total expenses are X. To balance that to zero, the district's budgeting to utilize that $869,000 of this fund balance in fiscal year '24. It's shown as an assigned balance because it was a board action taken at the end, still during fiscal year '23. But it also provides a little bit more information to the board in terms of like, hey, we have this total unassigned, or total unrestricted fund balance of 4.5. These are, these are the decisions we've already made related to that. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have questions.
Sure.
So you're saying, your understanding is all those numbers that you just rattled off, like the $869,000?
Yep.
Was it, was an assigned balance made by the board in 2023? That's what you found in the books?
Correct, with the approval of the budget.
Yeah, okay. And then I have a question here. So the three, the 4.5 million, does a 4.5 million decrease in the fund balance include the 2.8, almost 2.9 that was moved for the capital?
It does.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll talk about that when we go through some of the expenses, but yeah.
Just so the public understands that there's 2.9, almost 3 million out there that was just moved and set aside for building and land and future growth of the district.
When you look at the fiscal year '23 budget, the original budget was budgeted to have a loss in fiscal year '23, primarily due to the transfer of the dollars to the capital projects. So, so although it does, looks pretty dramatic on the, on the sheet paper, but it was, has in some fashion, a budgeted loss. And then there was also some unbudgeted items and that ended up causing it to drop down a little bit.
Plan for, there was plan for a portion of it.
Yes, absolutely. Think that, told I wrote that down, 2.6.
Eight something.
Yeah, two, the, the budget had a budget deficit of the $2.6 million, and that included the transfer of, I think it was 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollars to the capital projects. So, so yes.
Thank you.
Alright, I want to go in and look at the revenues a little bit closer for the year. Total revenues were $42,128,000. Comprised primarily of local and state dollars. Your local dollars are going to be levy, your levy dollars, and then any other, other local sources. So primarily, that, that comes down to be like interest income and donations. Total local revenue last year was $10,460. It was an increase of about $257,000 year-over-year. Your levy was the same as it was in the prior year, and that increase is primarily due to interest income. So district earned about $416,000 of total interest income in the general fund this last year. State money, $31,448,000. That was an increase year-over-year of about $2.3 million, primarily in base funding by the state. The support units for the district were flat, fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23, same support units. But that base support increased just over $6,000 per support unit, leading to that base increase of about $2.2 million year-over-year. There was a little bit other lottery allocations this last year that came in year-over-year. That was a little bit higher as well. Your other revenue is primarily, that's all your B-rate, reimbursements that are coming into the district as well. Move over to the expenditures. I guess we're going to do this one, because I forgot that this was in here. One of the things that's always good to look at is just where the dollars are coming in for the district. So this graph shows a 10-year history of your local dollars versus your state dollars. Primarily locals, your levy dollars. So it's sort of just a relationship of how much of your levy is funding the general fund. This last year, 24.8% of your dollars came in local, 74.4% from the state. You can see that your local reliance has slowly been falling since fiscal year '18. That's primarily because there, there has been some fluctuations with what was the approved levy and the emergency levy, but primarily, your levy amounts since '18 have stayed real close to where it is right now, at $9.5 million. But the state has been continuing to increase its funding. That's why you can get a little bit more of a spray in terms of the general fund actually being funded more by state dollars than it is local. As a percentage, having 20, effectively 25% of your general fund funded by your local levy is a really low rate. So I do want to acknowledge that that's good on the board to keep that levy where it's at. Some of our other districts that are comparable in size, I see, we have one other district that, that we deal with that's 39% funded from the local level, and we have another one that's 48%. So those are different numbers, and that would look like a different situation up here at Lakeland. But primarily, I kind of look at that as like anything 30, 70 is really doing a good job in terms of budgeting your dollars and your levy dollars and using those wisely, so.
That's right.
On the expenditure side, total expenditures last year were $46,607,000. That was an increase of about $8.6 million year-over-year. Instruction expenses were $26,121,000. That was an increase of about $3.7 million year-over-year. Primarily, all of that was due to salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits were up 3.5 of that $3.7 million on the instruction side. On the support side, total support expenditures were $17,108,000. That was an increase of about $1.7 million year-over-year. Salaries and benefits played a role in that, being up about $800,000 year-over-year. But your purchase services were up about $700,000. That, there was more expenditures paid for ground maintenance, building maintenance, out of the general fund. Those were items that historically had been paid for out of the capital projects fund. But the capital projects fund effectively ended at zero this last year, so there was more expenditures that the general fund had to cover with the plant facility fund effectively being down at zero. Professional development expenses were up about $66,000. And then this, this Fed expenses were up about $151,000 You also had another $200,000 year-over-year increase in building maintenance and supplies and materials. So overall, there was about $500,000 of expenses year-over-year related to ground maintenance, building maintenance, that I think historically had been covered by the plant facility reserve fund, so. That's planned.
It wasn't, or just not spent. Yeah.
Yeah.
There was no maintenance.
So we'll get to that, but you do have the plant facility levy this, in this upcoming year, so there will be that funding coming in, that $1.1 million coming in there for fiscal year '24. And then as you had pointed out earlier, Ramona, the transfers, $3.2 million. So this was a pretty significant increase year-over-year. $2,880,000 was that transfer of general fund money over to what we're calling board projects, right? Additionally, the bus depreciation transfer was $204,000, and the Medicaid tran, transfer was $160,000. But primarily, year-over-year, the big one was, the, the bus appreciation was quite a bit higher than it was last year. $60,000, $70,000 higher than it was in the prior year, and then the board project.
So the Medicaid was $160,000?
$160,000, and that'd be the total transfer. So you had the Medicaid fund that also covered like Fed-related expenses. But then you also have to, your match requirement on that is what gets transferred over as the additional transfer that covers that, basically, your Medicaid.
Well, we've been told the match transfer's $90,000. So for $160,000 to be it, that's another $170,000?
$70,000, yeah.
So that's not part of the match transfer? That's the other items that you're talking about?
Well, there was, there was two things that, and play right here. So, and Jessica might be able to give me an additional number on this. But throughout the year, the Medicaid expenses were paid for out of the general fund. So if you looked at the Medicaid fund at the end of the year, there were, there were no expenditures recorded there yet, right? So when we come in and working through the audit, part of the Medicaid balancing is to say, okay, well, you had qualifying expenses in order to get those revenue, let's move those qualifying expenses over. That number was roughly $500,000 of expenses that you're able to move over. But then at the same time, your portion of the match had to be moved from the, from the general fund as well. So general fund, if you think about when they transferred the expenses, those expenses came out of the general fund. $500,000 of expenses got transferred over. But then additionally, there is this Medicaid transfer that wasn't recorded that had to be. So the net of those is about $340,000 of net positive to the general fund when all those transfers got done. And I think that that's about the difference between the projection that Jessica had and where we stand right now in terms of.
And just to add in there, we, because of more children qualifying for Medicaid during the COVID period, we had a higher number of claims during that time as well. So the estimate of $90,000 that was in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year, the one that we're in currently, is maybe taking into account maybe some decrease.
Oh, it's been in the budget for four years, so, yeah.
We, well, we have a plan in place for going forward to be tracking that a lot closer and making Tony's job a lot easier.
Oh, good. Wow. Thanks, Jessica.
Well, but more importantly, we talked through the, the way to do the, the transfers on a monthly basis so that you don't end up with that inflated or that sort of, that hit, and then all of a sudden your transfer starts, like, oh, we didn't realize we had these dollars available to us at the end of the year because it, during the year. So, so we kind of talked through the journal entries and the adjustments that can be made on a monthly basis to get that number a little bit cleaner at the end of each period for you guys. Total expenditures, if we look at your ratio between instruction and support, instruction represented 56%, and total expenditures and support at 36.7 this last year. Again, these have fluctuated a little bit, but been pretty consistent. Again, these have fluctuated a little bit, but been pretty consistent for Lakeland over the years. As sort of a baseline, I like to use 40, 60. So 40% of your dollars going out the door to, or excuse me, support, 60% to instruction. You guys are right in that, you're right in that ratio. The current year ratio is a little bit skewed because you had 20% of your expenditures were transferred. So it kind of just dilutes the numbers a little bit, but if you can kind of look at those graphs, they're real similar to where they've been. And you guys are basically right at that mark, 40, 60. We look at just payroll and benefits last year. This is the last 10 years of total salaries and benefits. This year, general fund had 37,271,000 dollars of total expenses. That was up from the 32 million last year, which is about 13% increase year over year. But again, probably the most important thing is just your total budget. Payroll and benefits end up being the the big player there in terms of signing those contracts at the beginning of the year, sort of setting your budget. Then you're dealing with this smaller window, which is really other expenses. So if you look at it from a pie graph perspective, last year, total payroll and benefits of 37 million, that was 80% of your total expenses. Your other expenses are the 20%. So when you're talking about managing the dollars of the district outside of the salaries and benefits, you have, everything else is going to be your utilities, supplies, materials, purchase services, capital outlay, your transfers. So that that piece isn't as big when it when it actually plays into the overall picture for the district. And if we look at, again, just the 10-year history, I tend to look at a sort of a baseline of 85, 15 for payroll and benefits versus other. This year was a little bit skewed due to the the large transfer, but you're still, I backed out that transfer and you're at 86, 14. So you're right where you have historically been in terms of the allocation of total general fund expenditures. Any questions on the general fund before we go to the debt service?
I have questions, but they're probably for Jessica.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go through the debt service fund real fast. Started the year with a fund balance of $2,680,000. Revenues were just over a million dollars. That's going to be $955,000 of levy money coming in, $12,000 of interest, and then you get a $36,000 payment from the state for the bond equalization payment. Your expenditures were your principal and interest payments, ended the year with a balance of $1,603,000. That decrease is about $465,000 year over year. At the end of the year, the total bonds still due was $2,445,000. Those are scheduled to be paid in full in August of '25. So already made the August '23 payment. So two more, two more principal payments on there. But ending fund balance of the $1.6 million, the reason why you need those dollars there is you will not be receiving any more money and you don't have your August payment. So in August of '23, which you guys already paid, you have about almost $1.5 million of principal and interest payments due. So you've got to have that fund balance there to pay. For fiscal year, just as a note, fiscal year '24, the house bill is going to be reducing the levy to zero. House bill 282 came in. So you guys got that almost $2 million. $936,000 of it's getting applied to there. So that won't be that levy for next year, but those dollars will come in and get posted to the debt service fund. Capital projects fund, my last talking point, I'm sure everybody's disappointed. Capital projects fund began the year with $1,628,000. Your revenues were effectively the transfers that came in. The bus depreciation, the board projects transfers. So the capital projects fund, beginning of the year was the plant facility reserve and the bus depreciation. And then during the year, they established, or the district established the board project fund and also the land reserve. So those are really what those transfers are establishing. Your expenditures of the $2.3 million is going to be capital projects of the district. Worked through this last year is a bus purchase, siding replacement, roof replacement, the bleachers at the at the high school, Timberlake and Lakeland High School. All those are going to be expenditures that are getting recorded here. The ending fund balance is $2,814,000. The breakout there, if you want to know, your SPFR fund was at zero, the plant facility was at zero. That's going to have the levy dollars come in at the $1,146 next year. Bus depreciation fund ended with $577,000. So that doesn't go as far as it used to. But that's about four, four and a half plus it, I guess. You have your board projects, the ending balance of that at the end of the year was just over $2 million, $2,390,000. And your land reserve was $206,000 at the end of the year. And that land reserve had been there, it was sort of committed before and now it's pushed into its own separate fund there. So for easier tracking purposes. So overall takeaway, we'll kind of talk through the general fund loss. But I think that you're still, I mean, you're at the bottom of your minimum fund balance policy, but you're also aware of that and working towards that fiscal year '24. So I'll be, I'll be curious to see how that ends up for you guys at the end of this upcoming year. Debt service funds in good shape. You've got the dollars to pay your debt. And your capital projects fund seems to be right where, at least where you would, I guess, where you would like them to be. It's nice to have the board projects fund and the land reserve there just so that you can better track some of those projects that are happening for the board. Overall, that's the results of last year. Any questions for me?
I do have one quick question.
Yes.
On the OPEV asset for Percy Sick leave.
Yes.
Is that, is that our sick leave bank?
No, so.
What is that?
So sick leave, so you're talking about, when you look at your financial statements, you have your government-wide financial statements and that's what those numbers are, they're all in there, which is what your, what the district would look like as a private enterprise. And then we have our fund financial statements, which is really what I went through today. But if you kind of come back to that government-wide or district-wide financial statement, other post-employment benefits is that's what OPEV stands for. The sick leave, could have made the answer faster for you. The sick leave is, historically, there's been a sick leave allocation that was had to be paid to the state of like 1.14%, I believe, 1.16%. And it was funded in the sick leave bank that was then able to be accessed by different employees for different reasons. The state in 2020, I believe, reduced that down to zero. So there isn't any more dollars going into that, any more required contributions. They've extended that through 2026 because the sick leave bank is still, the sick leave asset is still over 100% funded and that's why you're ending up with the asset on your books. And that just represents your percentage of the overall OPEV asset that's down at Percy related to the sick leave. Did that make sense?
Michelle, are you just trying to think of, are you thinking of the Percy sick leave or are you thinking of our local sick leave bank in its entirety?
Those are two different things.
They're completely different things. The Percy sick leave bank, basically what it is, is at the end of your career, Percy will take like certified staff, let's say somebody who has 500 days of sick leave. Percy will divide that in half, multiply it by their annual daily rate of pay and they're able to use that money towards insurance premiums. So if they retire at 55, they aren't going to get Medicaid until they're 65. They can use that as gap coverage to be on our retirement plans. And that's all, you know.
Okay, no, and I do appreciate that clarification and I understand. I just know that, which is kind of like a sideways look at this. We've asked for the value of our sick bank and we are never given one. But if there is a way to calculate a value for our current sick bank, based on the fact that we actually have a value calculated for the Percy sick leave, I think that would be something good for our district to do. So I just, I'm glad to know that this isn't necessarily our, at the district level, bank. But what I find interesting is there is a way to formulate a valuation. And so on that, I would like us to maybe step into that with our sick leave bank so that we have a valuation.
One of the differences for that, so Percy actually hires to have an audit done of the sick leave bank. So through that process, they hire actuarials to figure out like, based on these assumption rates of retirees, how many people are going to use it. Then they kind of back in and say, well, how much is all those benefits worth today? And how much do we have? And it's that difference is getting reported as your sick leave asset or liability. So.
Right.
There. It's, I'm not sure that the the district without, to have like that number would require some level of actuarial hiring to get to that number. But I think that there might be more like how many hours are in the bank, right? Like that, that's, I think, then you can say, well, how much could that possibly be worth?
Correct.
Right? Based on that average salary of the district and just kind of have that number.
Right.
It's not a number that would ever show up on the financial statements.
It isn't.
But that's, I think what you're asking is like, how many hours in there and what's that potential liability?
Right. Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, there isn't any other questions? I appreciate the time to come up and do the presentation.
Thank you, Tony.
How's moving?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the financial report.
Is it?
Yeah. Thank you for keeping this long, Tavis. I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit record as presented.
Second.
We have motion in the second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the financial presentation. Again, I want to say thank you for the time and effort I know you both are putting into these reports that are actually understandable.
My apologies, I missed with the closing of our audit, I missed adding that summary page I promised you last month. I promised it will be there in November. But there, it's all there, but I just, I missed adding that one additional page to kind of tie it all together to match what we report to the state and what you see at the budget period. So that will be on November's.
Does anyone have any questions or points of discussion on the financials that were presented?
Now that you've accepted the audit, I will be able to put actual numbers in instead of estimated fund balances. I will note that had estimated, we would be at a 4.3 fund balance when we're at a 4.5. So thank goodness for small ones.
I'm curious, because we haven't seen, and I know we'll get to that as a point of discussion, the amended budget, are these fiscal year budget numbers for '24, the amended budget?
They are the amended budget numbers. The budget amendment doesn't have to go to the state until February.
Okay.
So we have time.
Okay. So it hasn't been sent to the state?
Our budget has been sent to the state.
No, I know a budget has, the amended budget.
That is correct. That will take a court action.
I was going to say, we'll have to see.
We'll have to tell them.
It's the assumption that it already got and I'm like, really?
Nope.
Okay, perfect.
We did add small notes at the bottom of some of the funds, thinking 257.
Yep, I see it.
Yep.
Sped instruction contracts will be corrected in October.
Yes. And then we did find through the course of audit that there's some additional 16,500 that will be moved into the land reserve as well.
Is that one of the donations that came?
Yep.
Would you discuss, of course, a look at our investment that brings in interest income?
It's our LGIP at the state level. So basically, when we receive funds from the state, it's too much money to keep in our bank account. So we put it into an investment pool at the state level. It has had a very good return on the investment over the last couple of years.
That's with the state treasury.
LGIP stands for Local Government Investment Pool.
Thanks, Randy. I cannot think of that off the top of my head. But so that we've had really good returns on that. We transfer out of it when our balance in our bank is getting to the point that we need to do payroll and we have a bank accounts payable.
What's, what's been the trend line on the rate of return?
Make a graph for that. I'm not, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Do you know what the current rate of return is?
I could pull it up while we're sitting here as like when I go back.
I'd like to know.
Yeah. I can do that as soon as I'm supposed to do.
It's been better than.
It's fantastic.
Amazing.
We pulled a lot of our money and dumped it in the pool.
Yeah. And I do my best to keep as much as possible in there until we absolutely need it in our bank accounts. So we're making as much as we can off of that.
And it's great because you can easily transfer in and out of it as needed without it.
As long as you do it by a certain timely date, like here tomorrow. So it's super easy access.
Pretty cool.
We started that years ago.
It's a really great thing. Yeah. It's a great rate now. We're the, we're getting a great return.
It's a little piece of information that wouldn't hurt to just maybe throw on the rest of that line.
I would be happy to.
What's the rate of return?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Any questions on the financial statements?
No.
Can you get over that? You can't get there?
No, I have issues. I'll go to it for me.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to the financial transparency. Actually, you might want to mosey on back up here. With respect to the financial transparency, this is where you shall discuss with us the decrease in fund balance and the resubmission of the budget.
As our auditor stated, the majority of the decrease in fund balance had to do with the transfer out for the siding projects for the three schools that were in board designated siding projects, siding windows. We also had an additional transfer for bus depreciation. We had a slight change in, I wouldn't say method, the method's the same. We just true up the number to be where we needed to be. We were using a prior year number and we agreed this year to fix it. So it'll be, it was a little bit more this year than was originally planned for. And then we had some additional expenses out of the general fund that were discussed. Basically, because we did not have a plant facility levy last year, there were some more expenses out of the general fund and then we had some more special education expenses that were, we have to do, we don't have a choice.
Okay. I am curious, within the audit from '22 to '23, the long-term liabilities increased 26,668,67. Do we know why?
Yeah, I don't know if that is, I had that.
I'd have to go pull it up and I would love to be able to speak to that off the top of my head. But I am a terrible test taker, so I can tell you the answer, just not, yeah, almost not. So.
Okay. If there were some significant changes for the '22, '23 numbers on the audit that it would be great to have an understanding.
I want to, I want to say it's depreciation back. I will tell you a correct answer.
Okay.
I guess we can just email you with those?
That would be great, then we can put it in the follow-up, that would be helpful for everybody.
Yeah, because like the million dollars for people's support, but then the decrease, and I didn't understand what the, because we're waiting on those or why there was a million dollar decrease? Is that because we didn't have the levy or, I was just trying to understand the, the deep, she said, like the operating grants and contributions was almost 900,000 less? Property tax was almost a million dollars less?
The property tax would be the plant facility levy that we didn't have last year.
Yeah, well, it was 941,000. Oh yeah, and then there was other taxes that were outstanding that we weren't, it said we were not going to receive, and I was like, well, why aren't we receiving them? Is this the part that's in limbo with the lawsuit?
That probably is, the penalties and interest coming from, that would have been coming from the county, but it's not.
Well, it's not explained, so I would like, in writing, what it is. But yeah, that's what I thought maybe it was, but then the increase to some of these that we didn't have before, I would like to know, like, what were the?
Which, which are you looking for?
Well, like some of what I just said with the people's support, almost a million dollars, maintenance and custodial, 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million. Yeah.
Yeah, a name of grace, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, he explained that kind of way, I think, when he went through the audit. We ended up spending money on the general fund for.
For things that would typically come out of.
Right.
Backs old ones in the past.
Right, right. I'm trying to reconcile in my head the conversation that we had about the siding and the windows and all of that and where that money came from and what, where the money is on the report. I would just like to know for sure where it came from, that was, that was all I was trying to. I know, you know, we were told it was for that, but that was my question.
So the money for the siding came from the fund balance?
Right.
The, an assigned fund balance, essentially?
Right, 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 yeah. I, I understand what the audit said. I'm trying to reconcile the conversation that we had when we approved those things and where the money actually ended up showing up on.
I will go back and watch that board meeting to see that conversation.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Well, I'm, I'm curious. Because in order to answer your question fully, I need to know what was discussed.
Yeah. Well, if I just knew where the 1.3, but I can email you, that's all. I'm just trying to get all these straight in my head so that when I'm asked, because we were just asked. I wish I had that levy information, because we were just asked how we were going to decrease our levies, it's like, well, I think we already did that, you know, but anyways. Just so I can explain to people when they ask, that's all. But I can, I can send you an email and ask. And the 465, the fund balance decrease of 465, what was that? Do you remember what that, do you see what that was? It seemed like a round number or something. Okay. I don't, I don't have any more questions.
So we had, and, okay, we had no capital outlay in the '21, '22 year. That seems rather odd.
Is that general fund specific?
It's on the government-wide financial analysis. I don't know that it's just the one fund specific. It is page nine of the financial audit. But for capital outlay for the '22, '23 year, it was only $463,000, but there was none for the prior year, which doesn't make sense. And I know that you have come forward and said, many times, things are not right where they were supposed to have been and things need to be corrected and made right, which I'm forever gratefully appreciative of that. And you inherited this, this is not something you created for this last year. I'm just reiterating that over and over and over again. Because it's such a unique position that we are in. But the budget that you brought to us, is my understanding, we will have to have conversations because that budget will need to be amended?
Yes.
Okay. To account for the.
Just the adjustment in the fund balance, it shouldn't change the overall operating budget, it's just to adjust the fact that we are starting at a 4.5 instead of the 6.8 that we were anticipating to have. It's just a true up of what's happening. There's really, unless the board directs us to cut expenses somewhere for our existing operating budget, there wouldn't be any change overall, other than to adjust that fund balance, that beginning fund balance.
Okay.
And he, he did mention, when we, when the board adopted this year's budget, the former CFO had actually budgeted to eat into fund balance of about $800,000, that was approved by the board. So one of the things that Jessica and I worked on right away was trying to mitigate that, so we weren't doing that. So we, we had several certified positions that were vacated through retirement or resignation that we did not fill, because we didn't need to, which, and the, our, the effort was to try to get to that $750,000 to offset what he had planned on. So that bottom number that Tony had, where if we spent a budget, we're down at the $3 million mark fund balance. We're doing our best to make sure that we're staying at the 4.5, or as close to it as we can, knowing that he, but he built the budget to eat up almost a million dollars.
This is a euro. Needs versus wants. Yep.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other budget questions? No? Okay. And then, okay, so you don't have to stand there staring at me more than, to sit down here, free to go. And then, the other thing that does need to be, we are still working on the track doctor issue for the high school and getting that resolved. So that the public's need aware? For our audit. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Did we, no, we did not. I reviewed the regular meeting minutes and the SIP minutes, and I had questions and that I made to Olivia regarding certain languages within the motion and certain things that were identified that did not recall. So I would ask that we table the minutes from the previous meeting, meetings for next month, so that the board can review what was brought to Olivia's attention. And then we have the minutes of the subcommittee meetings to be accepted. We see that the August minutes were modified to add this statement, if the board modifies, so. Bottom line is, is that information was never presented to the board. So it really is bothersome that it's out there saying that they're going to bring it to the board, but it was never brought to the board.
Put the longer 15, 23 minutes.
And then we also have the HR items. So we have the hiring and separation report, which looks different from what we've received in the past.
Yeah, I had asked last time if you wanted a comparison between the last two years. I can tell you, I don't like how I did this. I was trying to find out if there was a trend as far as resignations, retirements, and stuff like that. I did see that, it did decrease this past year. I'd like to take just a little bit of a deeper dive with the data and bring it back to you next month. I'd like to look at like transportation facilities, plus then I also saw that I did have a cutoff date of August 31st, and so it didn't address the certified staff that resigned like in September and things like that. So it kind of skewed those. And then in March, if we have like any exit interviews or anything for this year, I can bring you data for just specifically this year. But I would like to add more to that report for next month, if I could.
I'd be cool. Yeah.
And I, I do hope you can see there was a little bit of a trend that we did decrease in that, in that turnover a little bit, so. And everybody's app, everybody's pretty much the same, like if you look at the elementary schools, they're very similar, and then middle schools are pretty similar, and then the high schools, you know, are, it was just, it was interesting just to look at all of that.
Yeah, cool, all right. Thank you, yeah, it's great information.
Any questions on the board's book memo? Or anything else about HR?
Uh, no.
All right, so in addition to tabling the previous minutes, I think we'll just table the hiring and separation reports. And then we have the regular and special bills. Any comments or discussions on the bills?
I don't know, I think some, I don't think. Just what most of my time in the audit.
This engage learning for the math slash science curriculum, curriculum of 150 million?
Those were the textbooks that the board approved, it's for high school.
It's for high school, okay, that's, I was just, it doesn't say, ooh, so I'm curious.
Could see algebra, geometry, algebra two.
Okay.
And then, and then, I can't remember which science, I think it's the physical science, I can't remember which ones.
Okay.
We did three different companies for science.
Okay. The Nearpod Learning Lab subscription for 17,000?
It's a platform that our teachers have been using for several years, mostly at the high school level.
Okay.
It, it's kind of, makes, helps make the, like Google Slideshows interactive.
Okay. On Terry's Dairy, we have a supply chain grant surplus as an expense? I'm trying to understand that.
Um, I mean, she just, when they put in the purchase order for that item, she put it in surplus, so we would be using the grant funds from last year and she's using, the grant ends September 30th, the period for the grant, so she wanted me to finish using that grant before taking it and using the previous whole year's grant, so that's why it says surplus. It's not really a surplus.
Okay.
It's just leftover grant money from the previous fiscal year.
So did that expense of 3 million, or 300, 3 million, that's a lot, dairy! 3,158, so did that go out our door and that that money's coming from the grants? Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, so we paid Terry's Dairy and then I, I applied for the funds to be returned to us, so we get that back after it goes out the door.
Okay, so we paid Terry's Dairy, we're going to get that money back through grant funding, okay. Thank you. On the campus construction for the remaining balance for the water damage at John Brown for 52,000, is that coming back to us from the insurance company?
Yes.
Okay. So we are spending another 150,000 on our new math and science curriculum, was this like the remaining balance? What is?
This is the 150. Uh, those were, so the board approved the curriculum for science, and that's just the, the remaining invoices, the books that are coming in.
It's all, it's all part of what was originally, which just came a little later. Sometimes some of it hurts in pieces.
And I'm hearing that we're doing a lot of copies or did, like worksheets printing? Are you sure? Well, okay.
I don't know anything about that.
Okay. I'll ask more on that then.
Because I can tell you, I think I unloaded 700 boxes of curriculum this summer.
Kids have textbooks.
And there's workbooks to most of them. We did have some issues with just getting the teacher's editions, and so we ordered them, but they just came in late, so and we, there's definitely, like, we had to order a few more for Mountain View and some of the science, I mean, we just, some of the class sizes, we've had to order a little bit more, but for the most part, we have pretty much everything.
So maybe at the beginning of the year, we were doing some worksheets?
Maybe.
I'll ask for questions. And just, the GE staff t-shirts, are we being reimbursed for that? Because we asked that of Timberlake and Timberlake's reimbursing us. Because the district paid for it and Timberlake's paying back the district. Is Garwood doing the same? Do we know? It's the last item, it's for wear, go apparel, it's $930. Says GE staff t-shirts.
Yeah, that should be coming from.
Garwood?
Garwood.
Okay.
We did, the district did not buy our t-shirts. I mean, we, right, go, we're not, we may have, we may have.
We'll be reimbursed for it.
Yeah, we may have done the initial, but we get now doing a transfer back to the district.
Perfect. Okay.
State Insurance Fund premium audit adjustment, that's a one-time annual?
Um, yes, so you'll notice that we paid the state insurance fund twice on there. There was, the report that was used to pull the initial numbers was not quite correct. I audited it, thinking, when we were doing the transportation reporting, and found that the wrong report was used, so that was us correcting it and paying the additional premium.
So the initial recording was not correct, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And when it was correct, then we paid the additional premium?
Yes. And the correction parts are placed here.
Is a combined payment within the range of the budget amount?
It's a little bit higher. It's a little bit higher.
Little bit higher. Your workers' comp premium is annual payment?
That's the same, that state insurance fund, those are both workers' comp, so there's two.
So those are together?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's going to work very well.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I can't maintain connection.
I'm good.
I have a question, so. Keep getting, keep going. All right, on that note then. What's that? Oh, oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, tabling the minutes of the previous meetings along with the hiring and separation reports for '21 through '23. So moved?
Sorry.
Motion in a second, all the favors say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving into old business, we have the follow-up from our superintendent. Are there any questions?
Um, I'd like to just clarify for number one, Dr. Passit pointed this out to me today, but that the Let's Go Learn that trustee Grissom had mentioned, we did some checking, and it's very similar to iReady in that it covers K-8 standards, and so it doesn't provide an individualized pathway for remediation or extension of skills for our high school students. I didn't add that last bit in there, but. I didn't add that last bit in there, but that's what we're looking for, is something to replace Alex at the high school level. And, um.
Well, it was just the high school level? I thought we were doing everybody.
No, because we only were wanting to use Alex at the high school.
Oh.
Uh, because we have iReady K eight, so we, we have a diagnostic assessment that we can use with that platform. But it doesn't go through, um, just like the Let's Go Learn, it only goes through the eighth grade standards. But at the last board meeting, we also had talked about the Imagine Math, which is paid for by the state. Which goes at least through geometry. As an alternative to Alex. And then, um, as you can see, both city administrators, um, said that, uh, we cannot use the monitoring wells at either Timberlake High School or Lakeland High School for anything other than water monitoring.
Can I ask that when we have a compare, like when we're asking questions, uh, like comparisons between, um, like for our dual credit question of what are we offering at Lakeland versus what are we offering at Timberlake? Could we get apples and apples from both instead of apples and oranges? Or?
So, yeah, we got the.
Granny Smith's to?
We got the actual college courses from one and then just the names.
Just a gen, yeah, we just got general English, whereas Lakeland gave us more specific on what, which ones they're actually offering.
Yeah. Do you want me to, I can follow up with, uh, Mr. Everland and get those numbers in right?
That would be good, thank you.
Yeah.
Who requested for you to, um, you said the board requested to see if Hillsdale was on the approved list? I might not have been with that meeting.
Trustee Jones asked me when we were talking about the update on the social studies and where we were. He just asked if I would reach out to the state to see if Hillsdale had been approved. And they're no longer doing approved lists as far as like this is what the state, because it's local control. Um, the, they, the list that they have basically is about if you're on our list and you're bear, you're promising that for the next five years, our school districts are gonna get your products at a set rate. You're not gonna change the rate. So if, uh, if our district decides that we wanted to use Hillsdale and it aligns with our standards, then we can just do that.
Okay.
I also have a question on, uh, Timberlake Middle School master schedule. What's the difference between enrichment, elective, and exploratory? Cause it sounds like a whole lot of electives.
Right, so. He's using each one of those, um, the enrichment, so Megan Bush, Carissa Childress, and. There should be one more.
Randy Boyd?
No, Randy's truly an elective.
Oh, okay.
So Megan and, um, Carissa have kind of divided up the entire school. And they truly are doing remediation and enrichment around English and math to help with their, um, test scores. So the kids have their regular electives and their regulars. So Chris has a seven-period day where Lakeland Middle School has a six-period day. And he purposely did that to provide an opportunity for all kids to get what they need around English and math. Outside of their core English and math classes. So some are getting extensions and others are having some remediation. So those are the two on cards that we asked about.
So for sixth grade, Mrs. Miller is doing the same. No? Yeah, enrichment for sixth grade as well. On the ne, on the sixth grade tab.
Thank you, I was, I, I was scrolling and, yes, I knew there were three of them, so yes. So they, the three of them live around their, um, the classrooms where teachers have prep, so if I have prep time, so they sit in my classroom teaching, and there's an ancient classroom. They are laser focused this year on, um, making sure that kids are what they're, they're gonna be at first day of assessments.
Any other input or discussion on the superintendent's follow-up? That's it. Uh, we also have financial follow-up. And it should be noted, there's an action item apparently within the financial follow-up.
Ish, more of a. Hoping, hoping or direction, direction, yeah. Um. How you would like this presented in the future.
So is it, is this a metal lathe or wood lathe?
I'm sure it's metal because.
It's metal, yes.
Yeah. Is there a specific, is there a specific community member that's interested in purchasing this for five hundred dollars?
Um, I was not, like, he didn't share which community member, but it is, um, the appropriate value for the lathe.
Okay, it has to go to, for, it has to go out?
Our policy is five hundred and below, we can sell with your permission. Above five hundred, we would have to go out.
No, but every community member has to have the opportunity to purchase it.
Yep, no problem, we're caring about that.
We'd really like to talk about the yellow buses.
You think?
Yeah. Thirteen thousand dollars for one trip to Pocatello. We, we spent eighty-four thousand dollars last year on coach buses and they, the prices have doubled. So I don't know how we've spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on coach buses. But I feel like the board's been very generous and has consistently purchased new yellow buses. Each year we get two to four. Um, some years we've had six.
Last year was six.
And, um, I just, I just don't think that continuing to use the coach buses is a good use of taxpayer dollars. And we know we may run into some issues with bus drivers, which is kinda how we got in this boat. So in a pickle, maybe we could, that could be like the last resort instead of, as, as soon as we go a hundred miles, we're going using a coach bus, which is what we've been doing. But we didn't wanna make that decision without a conversation with the board.
Well, let me just ask, is the expectation that the district would pay for a coach bus, not the athletics?
If, if it's for state, state travel. State or state travel?
Okay. Well, I don't know, we took a coach over to Montana, that wasn't state, but, um.
Yeah, and there.
That was when we were having, giving them one opportunity to do any some outside.
Well, Timberlake High School is a little bit different because there's only one 3A school in our region. And so for them to be able to play 3A schools, they have, they have to travel. So, so they have taken coach buses, you're right, that is not state travel, but it's part of their regular schedule because they're the own, they're own, sponsors vary in Timberlake High School, that's it.
They were beyond that mileage limit, so that's what we're doing, which is.
We do have three staff members who have gone out and done the training and gotten their CBL, so, uh, two teachers and a, um, school, I don't know, Adam's the bookkeeper to help with some of this where athletic travel's needed. So.
I guess my question would be is, um, was it in the budget to pay this amount?
Budget, increased amount?
Yeah.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so it wasn't in the budget. But then my other question is, was this part of the promise of the levy that went to the community?
It would have been just state travel.
Yeah, there wasn't any promise that we were using coach buses. It was just that the district would pay for state travel, kids wouldn't have to fundraise to be able to go to school.
Okay, I can't remember the language, what was on the ballot, uh, as far as sports. I don't know, um, that would be my only question, is what was the ballot?
I think that was a levy before that, that they promised to give them an extra trip or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know if it was specific, that's why I'm trying to remember is how much, what was the sports language for the levy dollars? And how are we tracking that? Like, how do we know?
It just said athletics.
I think we said athletics. This levy, we said athletics.
To be honest, I don't think it was just athletics. I think it was all of the, I heard it was extracurricular.
Okay.
Yeah, like, we didn't define it to just athletics.
Okay. So is any of this travel in the budget?
Uh, yes, we, we did budget for state travel. We did not budget for the coach increases to be fifty percent higher.
Right, okay.
Um, so using yellow buses, it would allow us to stay more in line. Even if they had to stay an additional night, it would still be cheaper to use yellow bus versus a coach.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's what.
Cause that was, that was part of the reason too for doing the bus, the charter buses, was because they could drive them down there, drive them around, and drive them home and not have to stay an additional night.
That has changed.
Whereas our bus drivers, we would have to stay that extra night.
One of the main, main companies.
Changed then.
Yeah, now if it's dark, they, they won't drive during dark. So if part of the, if the tournament gets over at five in Boise, they're not driving. So we have had to spend an extra night doing them a coach. So that's another, in addition to the fifty percent increase.
Does that mean we can't leave at four in the morning in February? It's dark until seven in the morning in February, so.
It's a bracket, they, they're taking advantage. Um, I just pulled up the levy, uh, resolution language that the board approved and it says extracurricular activities and athletics, one point three million dollars.
I mean, I guess that, I guess that in my brain, whatever's in the budget is just the dollars, that's it. I mean, that's all we have to spend. And however that is spent, that's sorta up to them, we've got this much for travel and, you know, that means using our own drivers or not, or what we know.
That wasn't just for travel, that was for all.
Yes.
Extracurricular activity and athletic expenses.
No, I know that, but she has in the budget just travel line item, but not at this cost.
Beyond that.
A portion of that amount, yes.
That was that determined.
Uh, we basically, what was spent prior years.
Prior.
And it's.
Prior to this past year or the, or before that, because we overspent this last year?
We tried to take into account, because there is an increase in cost for travel. Hotels have increased across the board, um, increased fuel costs, all of that. So we did try to take that into account. So that one point three that was asked for was what was budgeted for. Um, and so we tried to split that fairly across the extracurriculars and, and the athletics as well. Um, we've actually spent a lot of time working with our, our ADs on that split.
Oh, good.
Um, it was a good conversation.
Had several meetings with the bookkeepers and the ADs at both schools.
We're trying to make this a collaborative approach, while we're making these kind of decisions.
And both ADs were a hundred percent in favor of moving to the, back to yellow buses to transport teams.
You gave us a little bit of information on the fuel bid there, but can you tell us? Who the current vendor is and what rate they will be charging?
Um, they'll continue to charge rack rate, um, they'll list rack rate. Um, it, it's not, it's more of a daily rate now, um, but it, it is in line with market, less the taxes that we do not have to pay. They were the only ones that responded to the bid. They currently have a fuel monitoring system in our tanks that will continue to utilize, um, but it, it, their rate is a fair rate based on.
What is their rate?
It, it varies dependent on when we purchase the fuel from them.
Can you give us a ballpark?
It depends on the day.
What did we spend yesterday or a week ago?
I would have to pull last, the last.
Yeah, it's gonna, every, every dump will be different.
Yes, exactly.
Depending on the market.
Yes.
It used to be, uh, we would receive a bid and that was, that was.
Right. It's not. Yeah, so, and we only received a bid from the current vendor.
Yeah, so if it's five dollars a gallon, whether it's fifty cents a gallon for road tax or taxes? That's what we pay for.
Yep.
But fuel is a big item, I think.
Yes.
So we need to monitor that closely.
Yes.
Jessica, they get promising information from the company that we have PO Harlow's.
I know, I told you.
But they did get word that they should be receiving chassis.
I will have a, for a confirmation of that. The person that has that information was out until tomorrow. Um, I really was hoping she was back today, but she will be up in the office tomorrow. So, um, if they have the chassis in place, then we should have a firm timeline on when we could expect to see, receive those activity buses, um, that we have a PO in for. We did receive confirmation that they will honor the rate that we have our PO in for. Um, so that's at roughly over seventy thousand dollars per activity bus. Uh, right now, brand new ones are going for ninety-eight to a hundred and twenty. Um, when we did the request for bid on used buses, they were coming in at ninety-eight to a hundred and twenty. Um, so it is my recommendation that we continue to wait for the order that we have in place. Um, it doesn't make fiscal sense to buy a used bus for more money when they're gonna honor the rate that we have.
Right, I would agree.
That's, they're putting on the rate.
I'm like the last one.
Uh, and that, I did get confirmation that the last one, um, they did end up honoring their rate, um, because of the, um, what is the name? You know what I'm trying to say, that the, the three percent?
Oh.
What we performance one? Yes, thank you. Like I cannot get my words right. Performance one, um, because we had the performance one, they did have to honor their rate. And it wasn't Harlow's, it was the other company.
Yeah, right. Can you add to your questions?
Um, I think so, that was all of it on there. Um, I did wanna circle back if you have a moment, on the long-term liabilities increase in our audit. Um, it is related to the net pension liability. It's a way that we share the unfunded portion of the pension at the state level. It's our share of it. It went up across the board for everybody in the state significantly with the share. Basically, if they were unable to fund the pension at the state level, that would be our piece of it, was twenty-seven million dollars. Um, the likelihood of that happening is very, very small. But that's basically the increase in the long-term liabilities. Um, it'll fluctuate as the plan fluctuates.
I was curious too, I get some, you know, if the increase in the salaries was, um, uh, just what was covered by the state. You know, I was wondering where that percentage reflected?
Well, if not.
If it was a wash or, I mean, cause we were, you know, made to do the increase. It's like, well, did we, you know, go above it or like, what does that look like? That was one of my questions.
Okay, did that sufficiently answer your?
Yes.
Okay, if you would like to read a really long, dry explanation of it, you can read node seven in the. Okay, if you would like to read a really long, dry explanation of it, you can read node seven in the audit. Um, it's the actuary, the, the amount that we paid for the actuary to come up with that number. But it's, it's good reading.
I'm challenging you. On the high school officials?
Yes.
I'm just curious, the, I'm assuming one set is Lakeland and one set is?
Yep, that's my bad. The top is Lakeland and the bottom is Timberlake.
Okay.
Um, and the reason, I wanted to put, explain in there a little bit. So when I had initially brought these numbers to you, I had, um, told you what we paid back to the buildings. What we had given back to them, and I didn't look at their side of things. So, um, Timberlake ended up using some internal funds to basically stay within their budget. Lakeland requested what they had used. So we got to kind of see the true, what we're actually spending with Lakeland. Timberlake stayed within their budget, using some internal funds to offset where they were going over in their budget. But if you truly look at what they're, what's being spent, they're both up almost, the identical amounts. So it's not like one was way higher than the other, it was just how they decided to use their part within their buildings.
Well, I'm curious. What the, we have an amount for officials, but then we also have other amounts. So I don't really know, um, like, uh.
Oh, it literally just says others.
There's a few things that were outliers that I didn't wanna throw into their own category. Like cross-country had an area where they spent a, a small amount of dollars that we, we paid them back for. There's just some random outliers that weren't really categorized when one sport or another.
Okay, but like soccer has referees, is that under officials or is that under soccer? Uh, baseball has umpires, is that under officials or is that under baseball?
So that'll be under, all of those will be under officials. Anything that we paid, um, through, what company are you using?
For officials?
Yes.
Their own company?
Well, I mean, where do you, you specify?
It's, it's a program called Dragon Box.
Yeah, Dragon Box.
And they assign every official for every sport here that would require one.
So any, anything that is under, under each individual sport is the game help that we used to do gate workers? Or like volleyball has line judges and those kinds of things would be to just help that sport with their functioning? Not the officials that go along with it. Officials is just an overall for the entire athletic.
So I think what Michelle's asking is you have like soccer and cheerleading and things like that, and then you have officials. So what's in the soccer and cheerleading, what comprises those amounts?
Right, so soccer would be like the referee, cheerleading.
But that's not.
Other officials. No. Okay. So, or sorry, soccer would be like, I'm so sorry, soccer would be the game help, so that would be the person sitting at the gate. And then officials, the umpires would be under officials.
Okay.
Does that help? Sorry. I, it's really hard.
Wild winters are open. It's on hold over there for seventy-five.
That's the opposite of what you just said.
I know, it is, it totally is, as soon as it came out, I'm like, nope, that is not what I meant.
Trying to get an understanding of what we got going on with these numbers.
Yep, no, and I just confused you even more. So.
It's not easy to, I mean, it's not hard to find. Okay.
Are all of these expenses paid out levy money?
For this fiscal year. That's how it's been designated, yes.
Part of that one point three million.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know why things have increased so significantly?
People are saying, so it's the officials that's mostly the issue, um, and.
I do see that.
Yeah.
But mostly, mostly at Lakeland and not at Timberlake.
You don't, you don't choose the rate for the officials, that is something.
No, that's set by the league.
Right.
There's a shortage around the state, so the, the leagues have all upped the amount to try to even get officials out of these games.
And then the summer lunch program?
Yep.
I guess, well, I guess I'm just trying to understand this because I think it was, I thought that we were told that, you know, we'd kind of suffered a loss, but the reality is had we not had the wrestling camp, we would have suffered.
We, it should have been presented that we would have suffered a loss without the wrestling camp. Um, without having a summer base program running and that wrestling camp for that, that week period. We would have had a loss this year on the summer food service program.
Okay.
So unless we have a higher utilization next year, i.e. we have summer base, it does not make fiscal sense to run the summer food service program.
Okay. Okay. So that is something we should review come March?
Yes, well, when there's a decision made about whether or not summer base will be offered.
Okay. Sounds fair.
Application for summer food services due March? It will probably be before March.
Okay. Not a worry. Now I'm curious on like, just comparative numbers. For sales, uh, in the eighteen, nineteen year, on thirty-four operating days, it was fifteen thousand. But in twenty twenty-one, on the thirty-five operating days, it was forty-eight thousand. But then when we go to twenty-one, twenty-two for forty-three, it's back down to seventeen thousand. And I know we had COVID money, that the free and reduced lunch program, et cetera. Why was it that significant at all?
So, in nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one, we were doing four sites, curbside service. So the revenues were a lot higher those two years.
For the same number though? I mean, cause in twenty twenty-one, we had thirty-five and eighteen, nineteen, we had thirty-four. Even do twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two, we had thirty-five in twenty twenty-one and the sales were forty-eight thousand. We had forty-three, which is more in twenty-one, twenty-two, and it was only seventeen.
Yeah, because that, that's the number of operating days, but if you look at the.
Right, but.
At the number of lunches? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
So we have one site versus four curbside sites.
And the numbers are funky because they're split between fiscal years. So even though there was thirty-four operating days, some of them are in June, some of them are in July. So you'll have a weird mix of the two, between the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, looking at the total meals and rather than the operating days makes a huge, that's, that's where you see that huge difference.
Just those dollars are bizarre. So from twenty eighteen, nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two, there's not that big of an increase.
Right, yeah, if you take those anomalies of those two COVID years.
Right.
Makes a huge difference.
I was just trying to, because I know that the funding was completely different with COVID. Because those were, everything was free, but yet it wasn't, we were getting reimbursed, so.
It was free, free to those that were eating the meals.
Correct. Not to those preparing it or.
Anything else, but no free lunch.
Never. Okay. So come, are you gonna put it on a, a note of to-do for?
Yeah, it's on, it's on, it's already on my calendar.
Perfect, thank you. By the way, so I'm just gonna direct Olivia to put it on the board calendar to make sure we knew we had to address that.
Oh, Olivia's amazing because she sends us a recap of, hey, make sure you do this one too.
So when it went, I'm gonna put on our agenda planning documents, so February.
Yeah, February, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other questions on the financial audit?
Point of clarification, if I can. Um, I do have permission to put the layout for community members to bid on.
Yeah, and I did find, um, was this the one, maybe just another one? Policy ninety-one hundred states for personal property, that anything less than five hundred? And then the next paragraph is less than a thousand has to go up. So being at five hundred, it falls under the thousand category.
Um, and then the other point of clarification, uh, you had asked for a breakdown on preschool and on food service. The way that we're presenting the financials now is that sufficient or do you need additional data?
I don't know, because I didn't review it in comparison of that.
Okay.
Um, I can shake your hand off.
Okay.
At least from my perspective, I don't know about anybody else's.
We were, we're just looking for clarification on what exactly you would like to see.
Okay, I understand.
I have a question, what is the, the five-year analysis of board purchase services? Um, what is Funds for Learning LLC?
That is our E-rate, so we pay E-rate, um, so when you pay your phone bill, you, you pay a, a tax. Um, and basically they use that tax to help fund, um.
Right, so why is that charged to the board? Why is that a board purchase?
We had this conversation.
Great question.
Yeah, we had this conversation. Um, I guess board authorized purchases and so.
Will we authorize everything?
Right, so the board didn't spend that money.
But that's where it's been budgeted.
Yeah.
We can definitely fix that going forward, um, it's just where it's been budgeted, right?
Yeah, and all of these, you know, chamber of commerce fees, association, I mean, the board never approved any of this. Um, these mailers, I never even saw a mailer, we never voted on a mailer, the board didn't approve any of this. And sixty-six hundred dollars, um, by the legislature for board training should be in there then if it's gonna be given to the public, say the board's spending the money. It should be noted, the sixty-six hundred dollars of training money that's set aside by the legislature to offset any board training.
Right.
But, um.
This is just a deep dive on that specific code. Um, if you would like, I can give you the entirety of, this is just that specific line item.
Yeah, we've, I have never seen this before and that's why when I pulled it up, I was like, the board didn't spend or approve any of this.
Um, and.
Except for the ISB for last year, where they, um, but yeah, it's the first time I've seen it, so yeah, um, obviously some of the, uh, things that we did do for, um, bereavement type things or, or what have you, obviously. Um, but yeah, I just found it interesting.
So have we just been using that budget code and bringing these things in and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I just selected.
And that's where it's been budgeted.
Where it's spending thousands of dollars.
So we would have to take some of that budget to put it elsewhere. For example, would make sense to me to maybe put that E-rate charge under business operations. Because basically, we use that service and we get back way more than we're paying for their consulting. Um, for example, the Chromebook purchase last year was over a half a million dollars that we got back. So it's well worth the consulting fee to participate in it. But I would have to take ten thousand dollars out of the board's budget, virtual services, and move it to business operations and put the expense.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, I mean, that's up to everybody else, but I, this, like I said, this is the first time I'd ever seen this.
This is part of the cleanup that we're talking about. Just trying to make sure that everybody's on the same page of where things are being charged and where the budget likes to go.
Yeah, and I appreciate that very much, so. Um, but I was just.
Yep.
When I saw it, I was like, okay.
I don't recall.
I also did the same thing.
Yeah.
We all kind of looked at it, we're like, alright, this is what it is, apparently.
I don't recall the rafting chamber on the twenty twenty-three. But then I also show that we're not, no longer doing the Athole or Spirit Lake Chamber?
And that's not necessarily true, it's just a glimpse onto that line item. So I can look and see where they were charged in last year. It's just a snapshot into that specific line item as was requested.
I absolutely hear what you're saying, but the board has never had, um, uh.
This picture.
We've never had any picture, let's, let's just say that. Um, as to what monies we're allegedly spending for board benefit, so to speak. So yeah, the last, I mean, there's some pretty high numbers here, but not for the twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm glad to see it became a lot more reasonable, if we want to call it that. So yeah, if you, I think it may behoove you not necessarily to go down a rabbit hole. But, you know, we have forty-two thousand the prior year and we have twenty-five this year. We have things that.
Well, it's gonna be even lower because we agree that's gonna be part of ISBA for twenty-four, so.
Right, but, um, the, the, the interesting thing is, is like, we have other chambers one year, but we only have one the next year.
Well, and we paid, we paid rafting twice in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I, I saw that too.
Twelve hundred and five hundred, so why, why is that?
Cause, but yeah, I don't know, but I, we know we need to, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
If it would make you more comfortable with it, um, I can pull out the board oper, the board's portion of the budget and give you a separate report as part of the monthly financials.
That'd be great.
Okay, I can do that.
And, oh wait, that's the twenty twenty, sorry. Aren't we still paying for Zoom, do we now?
No, we're not.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know if we still utilized it to the capacity we did during COVID.
So are, are we gonna continue to pay the funds for Learning LLC on the board?
I'll move that to business operations this year when it comes due.
So maybe we can.
That costs a half.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna take some of your budget to do it, Bob.
She's gonna take, yeah, she's gonna take away our budget too.
I didn't even know we had a budget.
Yeah, we've never been given it else.
You know, in the grand scheme of things, this is far less.
Although we're paying ten thousand, we're not getting the money back, it is going to everybody else's thing.
It is going directly to, um, educational benefit. The Funds for Learning, um, offsets, uh, our internet and broadband, um, and then it helps with things like Chromebooks.
Yeah, yeah.
We're familiar with that, we just never knew it was a board budget.
We're not just putting in random sponsor programs.
Well.
Well, this is why we were all so confused about where money was going and where money was coming. Because stuff was just, I'll put it in here, I'll put it here, I'll put it here.
Yeah.
The lack of consistency.
I, it's really easy to follow the way she thinks, which I love.
Well, and it, it's appreciative to be able to, um, literally have transparency with people. So you can say it's this dollar that balances over here. And that's what we've lacked for quite some time.
Everybody does it a little bit different, that's just the way it really works, so.
Not a worry.
Chelsea's works, not we two, so we're doing good.
Not a worry.
Um, I did pull up the distribution yield for the LGIP, I don't have the, I'd have, we'd have to look at the numbers to get the other thing.
The rate of return.
Rate of return, thank you. Um, the distribution yield for August twenty-three was five point one seven percent. If you look at over August twenty-two, it's one point eight seven, August twenty-one was point one two, so we're doing, it's really, really good. It's great to have money.
That is performing like crazy right now. We'll take it.
We might be able to afford this water.
I hope, only one though.
You gotta go refill it. And I did have the note on there for the November meeting, um, I just got that on, after your meeting last week and I didn't have a chance to prepare that to my expectation of what I wanted to present, so it will be on the November meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other, um, discussion on the financial file?
Well, the analysis that you were talking about, I only chose those because that's what I was told that we were over in. So that's why I wanted to look at is.
A lot of that was explained tonight, um, with the audit presentation, like you said, with the not having the plant facility levy. We had more general fund expenditures and then we did have more expenses related to special education. we had more general fund expenditures, and then we did have more expenses related to special education, um, because we had to.
Right, yeah.
I'd be happy to prepare that.
Yeah, I would like to see that, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Well, you're free to sit down again.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We have the facilities follow-up. So on this story, Paul, did we find out how many desks we have?
Um, we talked about that today, Mike is going to ask the head custodians to go into the slides and actually, so when we come in November, he will be able to tell you how many total student desks, how many total student chairs, how many other pieces of furniture, um, some of them are storing their copy paper in there. But, um, it'd be nice to know how many student desks and chairs we have and, um. The number's large, like I think it's going to be, and we don't need to keep that many, so we may be able to put some out for.
Yeah. That would be good.
So he is working on that. One of the things, um, I just wanna, uh, let the board know about the track. Um, Mr. Ferriola wasn't part of that project initially, that former CFO was. And so he was out of the loop, um, until we put him right into the middle of the loop.
Right.
So, um, he is the point person now, and he's the one that's interacting with the owner of the business, trying to stay on top of it. So he's done a good job of getting and moving, um, but I'd more prefer to be a fire.
Thank you.
You're welcome, it's a team effort, and I kind of, kind of teamed up on it.
Good.
And we're pretty close, last step is the striking, which hopefully will take place over the weekend or next week, and then that'll be the end of the project. And then I've requested the owner come and do a walk through with me on the track, verify my quality.
Do we have an understanding of the warranty on the track?
No, I don't, Matt might have more info on that, I, I literally don't know.
It would be on the quote, but there's no contract, so it doesn't matter what the warranty says in the quote. If there was no contract, they don't have to live up to any date.
Yeah, leg- legally, it's still a contract, I think.
Well, okay, I get what you're saying, I absolutely get, I am just concerned about how everything has sort of fared it out. I know it's nobody's fault at all, I'm not making that statement to say that. Um, I'm just concerned with where we are at in the weather season and what their application, and then we come spring and it's a hot mess.
Right.
And what are we gonna do and what's our recourse?
Right, but that's been, uh, the conversation, having it run as long as it did, I mean, weather is, it's like a chess game. So I explained that to Robert, the owner, and, um, prior to the color being away, worst-case scenario event, we would've come out and strike, we got track usable, and then once track season was over, come and finish it. However, we're far enough along, far enough along now that we have just the last application, but it's still bouncing out with the weather.
Right, exactly.
It's a day and a half project, and we're just, we're really playing the, the weather window.
Okay.
And, uh, like I said, if this weekend or next week is what you're shooting for, for total completion and not a warranty part of it, I will get that all ironed out and make sure we have some sort of a written document that states what the warranty is typically, any on tracks, oh, we do, okay. I wanna say it's like fifteen or twenty, depending on.
It's a five-year written warrant.
Five years, okay.
They, they say it's a twelve-year track, but they warranty five years, but.
Alrighty.
I'd like to stand.
So it's a five-point-one-year track. Or four-point-nine-year track, yeah. Yeah.
We do know that when we go out to, to replace that track in the future, we will have to new, new asphalt underneath next time, so.
Okay. Did you see the results for Spirit Lake?
Yes.
A date for facilities, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, yep.
A date for a facilities workshop, um, to determine priorities based on updated information.
So we can address the concrete?
Okay.
And the playgrounds?
Okay.
Or at least figure out for sure where, what your, how you wanna prioritize them.
Concrete.
We kind of figured that based on the conversation that we had prior.
Yes.
That's why we needed a facilities workshop, because we had already kind of made a decision about John Brown, whether we need to push that out of the year, to do it somewhere, or figure out how you want, what it's gonna cost us and what money we want to spend on it.
John Brown wasn't necessarily in the initial conversation, it was added when we saw what we were, without an understanding of what else actually needed to have priority.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was, that was spitball, that was never, uh, there was never a final decision on that, so.
On John Brown?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, real quick, so I started my weekly meetings with Emmerich, uh, last week. Uh, I'm meeting with the architect Wednesday, and we're gonna finalize the hardware because we're gonna wanna get that going right away, you know, doors, windows, locks, panic bars, because of lead time. So, uh, we wanna have that done by end of November, beginning of December at the latest, and so, um, but I am meeting, meeting with them weekly now, uh, until this project is done, essentially. Um, and, uh, the material for the siding and stuff's already been ordered, and they've got that. So that's where we are currently with that, those two schools.
Okay.
Um, and then the air test came back with no, no issue, came back normal, no recommendations, um, which is good. I think we did our diligence and then some on that project, in my opinion, um, regarding the investment that we, we made for seven classrooms, so, um, anyway.
What is colored, what is the colored chalk needed for, for LMS?
Colored chalk?
Caulk.
Oh, caulk, oh, caulk, yeah, yeah, we wanna, we wanna paint sidewalks with chalk, yeah. So, uh, the last punch list item is getting caulked, it's colored to match the exterior.
Okay, I know.
Finish the building, and it's been a nightmare trying to get that from the manufacturer. Um, so I've been waiting, there were substitutes we could've, we could've done, but I didn't wanna go that route.
Okay.
Meaning we could've put white caulk on and painted it, this is not, I don't agree with that. So I chose to wait, and that should be coming in actually by the end of this week, and then they'll come and spend a couple days applying it, and that'll satisfy the punch list stuff for Emmerich. And then I'm still waiting on the custom thresholds to be made for a couple of the doors where concrete had settled, we have to take that gap up.
Okay.
Uh, and then that'll effectively finish the project altogether, so.
Excellent.
Uh, let's see, what else was there?
So the, um, the, all damage from Lakeland High School fire has been remediated. So we met with Paul today, and the speakers, the vape detectors, the camera was damaged. He has replaced all of those, so Lakeland High School is fully finished.
Yeah, there's nothing outstanding right now, I'm just trying to think on either, either of the projects, John Brown or other than Emmerich, other than the caulking.
What parts is Paul waiting on?
He's not anymore.
Oh, okay.
This was, um, prior to today, he's moved.
Oh, okay, so great.
Yeah, I think he buttoned everything up last week.
Follow-up, to the follow-up.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
I can't, I think, I think that was it, partially I can remember for updates. Did you guys have any questions for me on any other thing in particular? Dare I ask, uh, where we are with John Brown for next year?
Well, we need to have the conversation, that's the facilities workshop conversation we need to have, because we have to factor in the concrete work that needs to be done around the district and some other things. So we need to, we need a meeting with the board, a workshop to kind of re-prioritize, take a look at all, at all of the information now that the board has. We didn't have the concrete information when we talked last, and so we need to make some.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because of what Mike has said, and that is that they're putting together all the plans for next summer in order to get, you know, appropriate lead time on purchasing, so. How, how far behind are we gonna be if we decide to go ahead with John Brown, I guess becomes the question.
We would have to go out to bid for that project.
Yeah, I thought they couldn't.
What?
We would have to go out to bid for that project.
Depending on who won the bid, it would be a conversation with them, hey, what are the chances? But the problem is, when it comes to supply chains, these guys are all purchasing effectively from the same
Right.
major suppliers in the US, so, um, it could be, it could be a challenge. I mean, doing our due diligence, probably effectively would be the following, to give us a cushion to make sure that everything was ready to rock and roll and onsite to be able to complete it. That would be a wrench in the works, if we came like any later than like right now, it's a gamble. I couldn't, I couldn't guarantee, there's too many unknowns, I guess. That's why I asked the question. Yeah, yeah.
So as far as the date for the workshop, would, um, would it be all right with the board if, uh, Olivia and I look at a couple of dates and then, uh, text the board to see if those work for you?
Okay.
And I've been working on that matrix I shared with you guys, that thirty-year matrix, if you look at that, it's pretty current. It'll give you a glimpse as to what my priorities would be prior to going into that, that workshop, if you wanna scan through it. I've got a couple of columns of long-range and short-range items that I've added, um, you know, give you a little bit of a heads-up prior to going in, so you can kind of see where on that, and then we can, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other facilities follow-up questions?
Sounds like a plan, can I do that?
Thanks.
Gotcha.
Moving into new business? Before we start onto our major action items, um, I've had some, uh, people talk, and I just wanna remind the board, talk to me, I guess, that, um, if we're going to abstain, it's supposed to be because we don't have enough information. Instead of abstaining, I'd rather we table items, so that we all have enough information to make, um, a decision on the item that's on the agenda. Cause it was pointed out that we were elected to represent, and we should be representing our people. And it's okay to abstain, but if it's, the reason for doing that would be for lack of information. And so if that's the case, then we should be tabling the matter, so that we all have enough information to make the decisions.
Yeah, for the record, I don't agree with that, move on.
Alrighty, um, moving on to supplemental curriculum request. Looks like there are three, four, four items. I am curious, the LHS PBS learning media, that's a game that they wanna print, is that correct?
It's a resource. It's an interactive resource that they wanna be able to use.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna add on the first one, The Apprentice Hall, it is a textbook that we used back in the nineties, and it is, uh, they wanna use it for their strategic English, and it's for, it has just a bunch of short stories, like Old School, we used to use it, um, and so they're just asking to be able to, for the strategic, use it again, because it has low relaxed style levels, it sounds like, and it's just easier reads and not long lengthy. So, um, it looks like some of the reviews said there weren't a lot, and it's because it's, it's back from the nineteen-nineties.
Yeah, it says nineteen-ninety-one.
Right, so, um, but, uh, we used to use it, and it's just.
Do we have it?
We have it, we do have a copy of it, not here, but I could get one, but it's just, it's filled with several short stories.
Yeah, it'd be great to be able to see it, because.
Or at least the review committee that's looking over stuff, have it available for them to actually look at the, the text would be awesome.
I did find a copy of it, but it will only give you so much, so I wanted you to pay, like.
Yeah.
Right.
I can send this back out to the group and just see if anybody wants to come and imbue it.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And then bring it back to the board.
That'd be perfect.
And just, you know, for the posted, this is a, um, maybe we use it as a literature circle in the eighth grade classes, and it does have to go to parent approval, they send out a syllabus, and parents will have to give up permission to read it, so.
For which one?
The last one, the LMS, the posted book.
Oh.
It's for, uh, uh, eighth grade.
Yeah, I mean, if there's profanity in the book, I would really want parents to know. And I say if, because we don't know.
Right, one says there is, one says there isn't.
And, you know, bullying, hurtful words, I mean, we're trying to improve the climate.
There are some, I haven't read this book, but there are some good books out there that, like Wonder, that's about a kid being bullied, and then you get to see it from his side, and then at the end of the story, you break in, and then, so there, there can be books that include that and that can be positive, as far as teaching to how to, how to treat.
How to navigate it.
But I haven't read that one, that's what I wanna.
Any other input or comments on the supplemental resources?
So if we go forward with this, um, this questionable one, um, I would like it more than, you know, with the typewriter, we write specifically with the opt-in form, literally listed the pages, the parent could just flip to the book, see what we were talking about, so they don't have to read the whole thing or go try and find it themselves, you know. Um, if we're gonna do that, um, they would give them specifics to go say yes or no. Um, I'm just sad that we stooped to, can't give kids something more literary, appropriate, or good for the brain, and all those things. We just don't know how to not do that, why we don't raise the bar instead of going down this road. I just don't, I mean, is there nothing else that we can, kids can read to?
My understanding is this is a highly requested book by several of the kids. So they're trying to do high interest to engage the reader, but it is a highly requested book.
Well, I'm sure there's lots of things out there that young people would like to get their hands on, does it need what's the best thing for?
So is this gonna be utilized in class, or is this utilized in that, the book thing that we have going on where the kids are reading?
Oh, not, it's not IBL, it's in class, it's in class.
Okay.
It'll be a literary text in the classroom.
Okay.
But it's set up so that they're doing lit circles, and kids get to pick a book to read. This would be one that they could choose. Um, and pair, because it's a lit circle, parents have to opt their kids into the books.
I wish I could see one of the started up, I know they do have good entrepreneurial, um, shows on the PBS.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
They have, um, some pretty good things, I was watching myself sometimes, or the, but I just don't know. I mean, it's hard when you can't see the curriculum, it's just a link and. I don't know what's in there.
My understanding is that startup companies, it's just different ideas, it's some product based type things for entrepreneurship.
Okay. And that's the class that's already, that was just recently approved? Is there a discussion or conversation? Would anyone like to bring forward a motion?
I would move to approve the last three, and table the top one until there's been further review by the committee.
Okay.
Approve which ones?
The bottom three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? To Nate. Three in favor, two opposed, motion passes. Moving on to board policy, we have policy thirty-five hundred, policy thirty-three forty-five, policy thirty-three forty-five P, and policy thirty-three forty-five F. Policy thirty-five hundred is our student health, physical screenings and examinations. It was, oh, super clean. There was language that was added for transparency with the legislation. And then, I mean, you can see the other things, we did add that because we do impact testing, and then, of course, the mental health services. Discussion on this policy? No comments, no discussion? Okay.
I don't have anything.
Alright, moving on to policy thirty-three forty-five, use of restraints, seclusion and aversion techniques for students. This one. So there, the committee wasn't able to articulate a couple of different sections. Secclusion and restraint is not supposed to be used, however, children can be put in blue rooms, or calming down rooms, or rooms, which is actually seclusion. So there was concern about the fact that, you know, there have been instances where students are left in these rooms for quite some time. Be it part of their IEP, or five oh four, whatever. However, the committee had a conversation about the fact that there should really be a time limit, that if a kiddo is in a room for an extended period of time, that the parent better be called. Because ultimately, that parent should know what's going on with their student. And if we need the parent to come down and take care of the child, the parent needs to come down. I don't think we should have any staff member have to monitor a child for a couple of hours in a room. Nor should a student be placed in a room for that long. So it was sort of a consensus that, you know, maybe after fifteen minutes, is that too long, is that long enough? So the board needs to provide direction on that. And then the other point that was highlighted, I think, is the district's training for school personnel. There are a maximum of five personnel for each building that receives the full and complete training for, from the Crisis Prevention Institute program. Should it be minimum instead of maximum? And this policy was revised based on statute. And coming into alignment with statute, IDAPA, and
State Department of Education.
State Department of Education.
Yeah, which basically barked down the federal guidelines that change for seclusion and restraint. And some of the parents that were there, they were, so we were trying to figure out like fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, ten minutes, I mean, like how long, and then
Right.
Parents were like, no, immediately. It's like, well, you know, sometimes a little kid's just upset, and he just needs to calm down for a second, and he's ready to go back to school, or whatever. That's, so that's why we just have all board meetings aside, because there is nothing that says only for this amount of time, and then a parent needs to be called, or a guardian, or whomever, like somebody needs to come and look on the child.
The policy needs to help our staff, so that they're not making decisions thinking that it's okay for him to be in the blue room for a half an hour, or not. I mean, I would much rather err on the fact of notifying a parent too early for the parent to give direction to the staff, than for the staff to assert their own judgment over a situation that really needs parent involvement. And I think too, if we're not notifying parents, and we are having problems with behaviors, we're not helping all the kids that are in the class. It's just a perpetual problem. Discussion?
There's no law on the time limit?
Nope.
No.
And that seems to be the issue, you know?
Yeah.
Between the parents and staff.
The law specifically says that the moment the imminent danger is no longer at play, you are supposed to cease and desist restraint or seclusion. But that's the only qualifier, is you're done when imminent danger is done.
Would you add to that?
Yeah.
That's all it says.
Yeah, CPI, two different things talking about, but if a restraint is going to occur, there is limitations on how long you're able to be in a restraint.
How long is that?
Six minutes?
Specific to CPI, but not specific to legal statute, right?
Yeah.
But it also, the language for legal talks about imminent danger, and once that is no longer at play, you're supposed to stop.
Right, so the discussion was, if the child is in this room, how long does the child stay in the room, that's where, before the parent's notified? The parents that were there said immediately. You know, but sometimes that's not, I guess, by staff, that's not how it works, so there could, there was no consensus around the table.
Yeah.
So we're like, well, the board came aside, then is it, you know, I said, what, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, and that just was like not acceptable at all. So I sort of said, well, what about fifteen minutes?
What is your thought?
I don't have a problem with notifying the parents after fifteen minutes, but our reality is, is that sometimes it takes more than fifteen minutes for a kiddo to get themselves to a place where they're, they're ready to go back to class and actually be a learner. I don't, I don't have any issue with notifying the parents after fifteen minutes, as long as there's not an expectation that at fifteen minute mark we're telling the kid, you have to leave the room and go back to class, because sometimes it just, it does take them a little while. And they might go in really amped up, and they're kicking the wall, and they're screaming, and trying to get all of the emotions out of the little bodies that are overwhelming them, and then it takes, then, then sometimes they're teared. It just sometimes takes them a while to go through the process of getting their bodies regulated again, and ready to go back to class.
But it's not saying after fifteen minutes, the child's released from the room, it's that the parents contact the parent, yeah.
I, I, I don't have any problem calling after fifteen minutes, if that's what the parents are saying they want, it doesn't necessarily-
Well, the parents are saying immediately if their kid is put in a-
Well, I would say that most of the time when kids are being put in a room, there's probably an IEP tied to that child, or a five oh four, and that plan is part of the IEP, which parents sign off on, so they're going to know.
Is there typically a time on the IEP?
No.
Some, some parents have actually, two different scenarios, sometimes parents, please don't let, please don't notify me until the end of the day, just work or something, others will say, I do not want a seclusion room to be used, please contact me immediately for my child to be picked up. So we have two different scenarios, but it's definitely something we talk about, and it's in the IEP.
If we're giving parents through an IEP evaluation, the ability to say immediately, or the end of the day, or within a certain amount of time, why wouldn't we give any parent that?
The ability to have that conversation with the staff, and
To have that say.
And I think those conversations happen, we have, you know, you've got kids that are little kindergartners who, it's the first time they've been in school. So parents didn't know that they're in a struggle with, with informing a little bit to roles, and, and they'll have some blowouts, but there are there are conversations with parents about that, so we could formalize that process in the policy, if that's what you're looking for. There is a conversation, the parent is aware of the behavior, and this is, these are the parameters that the parent is comfortable with, if that's the route that we want to go, but we don't, we don't, the vast majority of our kids never go into those rooms. It's truly the kids who struggle with self-regulation, with emotions. And sometimes kids will just say to the teacher, I, I just, I'm, I need a break, I need to go sit down in a quiet place, I need a break. And they'll just go and sit, and they're not throwing a tantrum, they are overstimulated in this environment, and they need they put themselves in a little bit of a timeout, just, I just need five minutes to kind of-
Okay, but, I mean, for the purpose of this policy, seclusion is the involuntary confinement, it's not the student that's saying, I need a break.
But I just, I, yeah, I just was saying that the vast majority of our kids don't ever go in, we don't ever put them in that room.
How often are these rooms used?
Some kids will visit every day.
We don't, I, so I think it is a little misleading, we have like calming rooms, or sensory rooms, or something like that, that a lot of students use for breaks. But if you're asking how many times students are forced in a room, I definitely would tell you it's very rare. So I have received, I could count on one hand of how many reports this school year, that this has had to be used. So CPI does not let you transport students in a hole, so it's not like we have a special room to put someone as soon as they elevate. We, we have to remove students, so classmates have to be removed for us to calm, and then we can reestablish. So I, I don't want to start using the term rooms, when we don't have an actual room that we use to restrain students in.
The sensory rooms, the break rooms, those are usually written into their IEPs, like the kids can, or the teacher can say, you look like you might need a break.
Yeah, a lot of our PB, so all of our elementary schools are PBIS, and so they are, that's part of their tier one, tier two behavior model. So kids are on break systems throughout all of our elementaries. And that's, there may be a kid that isn't regulated well after maybe recess, and needs an extra two to three minutes just to self-regulate, and then transition back in, so those are all also written into some sort of plan when those are used as well.
Well, I, I would feel like if they're used that infrequently, when it's being a restraint situation, that the, and it's that irri, that infrequently, that the parent is being called immediately, if they're going to be restrained in their
Seclusion.
Situation.
Seclusion is not a norm.
Yeah, yeah, if it's that irregular, then it happens.
Okay.
So then that last sentence should-
And that's what the parents felt like to, that's exactly what they said.
Yeah.
So then the last sentence should state that, just basically a phone call shall be placed at the parent immediately, period. Okay?
I hope we're on the same page.
Yep. And then, I think we should, in my opinion, change the maximum number of people we'll train to a minimum number.
Yeah, that was, that's where that it was under maximum, yeah.
Is that a CPI?
Yeah, so CPI does, five is not a, a maximum of what's CPI, but CPI does caution you the amount of people that are trained in restraint. Now CPI, we also do a lot of training in for our de-escalation, and so we do, we'll do modules one through eight plus ten, but we won't train some staff on actual holds. So there's kind of a two-part training that we do with all of our staff, so the de-escalation part, that's part of CPI, we have all of our staff members that will be trained in that. But then we also have just our certain team members that are trained only in restraint. CPI doesn't, there's a lot of research behind, the more people that are trained in restraint will automatically go to restraint, and it's not imminent danger.
The bullet points on the policy are actually from the State Board of Education of what's required. And so I think we're within this policy, if we have a minimum of five personnel, then if there is a need to have more personnel trained in crisis management, de-escalation techniques, correct use of restraints, seclusion, functional behavior assessment, behavioral intervention plans, and crisis plans, then we can do that.
Or a recommended five personnel. We can have more.
Right.
Or less, but trying to stay in that five.
I mean, because if, if schools get huge, we may need second.
Right, which, what we don't want to do is tie our hands in.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
I don't have a problem with a minimum of five, we can stay with five, if that's what's working for us, it doesn't mean we have to be different than that.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
And it was my understanding that five is what we've always had, so, okay, then let's just make a minimum, in case we need to grow that number, hopefully not. So, okay, then let's just make a minimum in case we need to grow that number. Hopefully not. Okay, and so then thirty-three forty-five P. It's a policy committee's recommendation that we get rid of it because it's not procedural. It's more of a anthem. And a lot of what is inherent like of definitions, et cetera, is already in the policy. So we don't need to. And the procedures aren't, we're not laying a direction given that the staff's already trained. And so if the unit that we're using has a specific way of training and we don't have it, I mean, it's just, it's too complicated or convoluted. So to just remove the procedures, I think is appropriate for our district. And then the form is the incident form that would be completed should an incident occur. And there wasn't any, I think this is the form we've been using correctly?
Yeah.
There wasn't any changes or modifications to the form. There wasn't a need.
And those forms come with the district office, which allows us to kind of monitor. So if we have a school who's giving us a lot of forms, then there is, there's more training needs to happen at that school. So we are monitoring kind of patterns and trends that we see.
So do we have any other further discussion? On policies? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on the board policies presented.
I would move to approve board policies discussed with the corrections or changes as discussed.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
More in favor, more opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to student clubs.
It's just the top two. So I, I do want to clarify for the drama club because it, I reached out to Mr. Everland for Timberlake High School because it said funds from the district to attend competitions. And so I, I asked and Mr. Everland said they won't be going to any competitions. This truly is just a, a club. So there is no funding that is necessary for that. And they don't have a drama teacher this year, so the kids want to continue to be able to play. That's why it's, yeah, that's why the club is there.
Follow it.
Yeah, and then the chess club from, like, primary school.
Any discussion on the clubs, you could?
Is it typical for clubs to have quite such stringent membership rules? The drama club in their active and membership and then they go into active and inactive sta, status?
It might be that if you're not consistently coming, it makes it hard to put a play on. If you're relying on somebody to be a part or, or be a stagecraft person. Especially since it's not happening at school now.
Minors without the right to vote are eligible for membership. What if they're eighteen and a senior and I don't understand that one either. Yeah, it didn't, yeah.
Kudos to the effort put into these. But it also doesn't describe how they're going to have a board and what's in their board, just that they have a board.
Yeah.
Do you want me to follow up on this Article Three and get some clarification?
Well, I think-
Well, yeah, Article Three, the whole, yeah.
I think all of their bylaws, we just want to make, at least I would like to know that they know what they're saying. That this isn't just a copy and paste. Because it doesn't have to be this technical. And then they can also resubmit, removing the fact that they're requesting funds.
Yeah. Didn't know if that was like a normal drama thing or-
Well, we are talking dramas, so you never know. Any comments on the chess club or conversation?
No, I just like that even if he doesn't have, they don't have your email, you're, that's it.
You're out.
Forget it. It's all good.
They're very serious about their own-
And our students should all have email addresses. School email addresses anyway, those, but yeah.
I think they did think about it. I think that, oh yeah, I think they did. I think whoever did that actually read that and they did think about that. And you know what? If you're not answering the email, then you must not be serious, so.
I could be.
Yeah, I think they did.
Okay, I will bring the drama club back.
The chess club also didn't have, which state standards would be met through participation in this club? Although they kind of did, to which the class would be aligned, they-
But they didn't put standards in?
They didn't put it in as the standards. I think they just combined them all into that one section.
So is MP point one, is that a standard? Makes sense of problems and perseveres in solving them? Do we know?
It's a math, it's a mathematical practice.
Okay.
And MP two, those are all mathematical practices.
Okay, so they are there.
Yes, it says these standards were found on one nineteen one twenty.
Oh, yep.
There are eight mathematical standards that we teach to, so they've got four.
I would move to approve it.
I'll call for a motion.
I'll move to approve the chess club and request further information on the drama club.
Sure. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have the rezoning protocol. The only thing that I had a question about when I looked through this is point five, because you go from August to September through May. And then you go to January and then January through March and April and May.
I struggled with the, with the, putting the timeline into the protocol. But that's what I was asked to do by the principals. They wanted, they just wanted the one document. And so some of those items take place all year. And others, there was a, a specific time when something needs to be done.
Okay.
So I tried to kind of keep them, like the September through May, I'm, I will, if we were going to a rezoning, I would include a monthly update to you from the rez, that rezoning committee every month. And then, but in January, the plan needs to be finalized enough so that we can take it to the parents as a first draft. So if there's a different way that works, so you need to reunderstand.
So what I hear these things calling out is that next time, we're going to utilize a year approach for rezoning as opposed to two months.
Well, we used a year. It took us all year last year. That work happened all year last year.
On the rezoning?
But-
But no conversations with parents?
Well, because we didn't, we didn't get to the point where we brought, we brought the first recommendation to the board in April. And then the board wanted us to go back and look at something. So when we brought it again, it was, we didn't have a May, a May committee meeting because of the levy election. So it was June and then so that meant we didn't bring it back to the board until July. But we were working on it all year. There just needs to be some hard best, like dates. We, we have to get through this. And so what I, what I should have done last time is probably, there may have been months where we needed to meet more than once to get things nailed down so we could meet these timelines and have things out for parents in a more timely manner. That was, my intention was really embedding the community. What I heard from the board and, and the community really was more communication at the, from the start, so everybody was aware that we were looking at it. And then updates as we went. So that, and then taking it, what we did when we rezoned my first year as the assistant superintendent, and I ran that process and it worked beautifully, was we, we took our recommendation to, it was Betty Kiefer that we were rezoning for. I met with the Betty Kiefer parents, brought the recommendation. They actually gave us some ideas we hadn't even considered and ended up using their ideas. And then came back to the table, went back. And when parents get to participate in the process and feel like they have a voice, it's a, it's just a lot easier. So I tried to make sure that that was embedded in the process. I did send it out to parents. I got two responses via the survey and then I got an email from a parent. And all three of them said, this is very clear and I appreciate the clarity.
Any further discussion on the rezoning protocol?
So based on what, what you laid out there, would be included any change next year?
That's why I hesitated with the timeline in there, but I feel like you have to have the timeline if you're going to meet those deadlines where you're actually following the parents that the schools have identified and giving them an opportunity to give feedback.
Well, I am curious if like, based on this timeline, we would have to know in May. Right, so when it comes May, we would have to know that next year, we would need to implement rezoning based on numbers we don't know yet.
Yep.
Doesn't seem, is there, is it, are you doing a full year approach here?
I could change that and have that be September when we see
Well, it seems like August, I mean, you, August is when, well-
We're going to actually change registration to May.
Good.
So that will help us. So that's part of why we're in May.
Right.
Because then we'll be able to look at the numbers and get a sense of where kids are going to be when they do that. And that's not just returning students. We're going to open it for new students. So we'll be able to get an idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know you've been asking for that for a while and we were able to work through the two little sticking points, but we got there. So that's why I picked them.
Okay, all right. So then as we turn, change the enrollment for school to be more before the first day of school, then we would have a better understanding of, oh my gosh, there's so much growth and we really need to consider it.
Right, and the problem with that whole scenario obviously is we're going to have one year where we're going to have crowded classrooms. And to the best of our ability, we, we've, and we've done this forever. If we've got a school that's really big and we have people moving into it, if they can accommodate it, Jessica provides transportation to a different school in the district where we do have rooms, so we do force transportation.
Well, and if, if with the open enrollment with our, you know, if a parent feels uncomfortable with their kid being in an overcrowded, they have the ability to move to a different school as well.
Right, right.
Yeah, we just know that there, we may have a year where it's a little bit tight while we work through the process. But that was what I heard loud and clear from the patrons last summer was we want to be part of the process along the way.
Right.
That's thoughtful and intentional.
Any further discussion on the rezoning protocol?
If you follow the timeline, if you go through May and you're very comfortable with there being any change and get hit harder in September and suddenly realize, gee, we need to do something. So how do you, how do you handle that?
Then I guess I would come to the board and request that we start the process. We're going to be a little bit behind the eight ball, but I could, you could still pull a committee together. I could still notify the community that we're going to, I mean-
And I guess that's my point. You can do, you can, you can work through all the steps you can, starting in September when you actually know when your numbers are.
And it says should be followed, so it doesn't require that it has to be done and this. It could, it could as easily say as soon as is identified that there, this needs to happen.
This would be the, this would be the ideal to know, however, there, this could be modified to meet our needs should the need arise at a time other than May.
Yeah.
And I can put that language in there so it's more clear that this would be the ideal path. But we do have-
Just don't lock yourself in too tight.
But we do have the, we have to be making changes to this as needed. I mean, if, if it's not May, it's going to be September. Who would know? When kids are-
Or June or July, if you get an influx of like, I don't know.
Ten apartment buildings open up and everybody populates them and then, yeah.
And there actually are more than one child per three units in a particular building, right? So I can modify the language at the top to indicate that there's flexibility with, that this is, this is the suggested flow. Obviously dependent on when the need arises and when we know we are going to need it.
It'd be wise to do that. You know what? Put yourself in a position where somebody's going to come back and say, well, you didn't follow your protocol.
I'll, I'll modify that. I'll loosen that a little bit. Would you like me to change the language up top, that great act to the November meeting for you to look at before you do it? So you can make sure it reads the way you want it to?
I moved to table this till November. One second. We have a motion. We can't to table the rezoning protocol till November. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we have the updated organizational chart.
You guys have already, um, approved this, but we, uh, updated it with the new, uh, SRO app to move it.
Um, I did have a question. Who is, there's a tech integration specialist? What position is that? Because there was no job description to read.
She, um, worked with Michelle Stanford. Um, she was fired a couple years ago.
Okay, there's no job description for a tech integration specialist? And I know that we, well, if there is, there isn't one on our website.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it because they, they did a, a trimmed down version. I know I'm Michelle's. So I'll, I'll look for it for you.
Okay, that would be great. Any other questions on the updated organizational chart?
Moved to approve.
Okay.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we have an alternate author, alternative authorization. I thought we've been told that we can't do sped alternative authorization. Is that not accurate?
We can't do emergency provisionals for sped. And there even, on this one, there even, it's a little difficult. I mean, they do look at these a little bit harder. And I, and they're giving basically two other letters of support. And, um, and then also the employee's letter of everything that she has done. She has followed through everything, as you can see. She's, you know, done remarkably well. She is just having problems with her praxis and she has acquired a tutor, um, to assist her. And so the state just basically said plead your case. And so if I can get this through, I mean, I've, I've been vague.
Okay. So she's already working for us and like-
She is. They, because she, the, when she was hired, usually we have, like, three years to do this and the state was, like, not on praxis and sped and all of that. So i- it's hard to find a special education teacher and it's really hard to find a good one, and she's a good one. And so we're, I'm, we're just gonna, we're gonna advocate and hopefully we're gonna win. So she, she'll, they'll give her one more year to, you know, get that praxis done. And then at the end of the year, if she can't do it, she's, we can't, we can't keep her, so.
She came through year three of her alternative authorization. We were surprised when the state came back and said that they weren't gonna give her the year three because typically it's a three-year.
Input discussion on this?
Oh, yeah, she's already here. And she's really good.
She does not have a contract, just so you know. She is working, we have her at the moment as a long-term staff. Until we can get this resolved.
So we never put a notice out there for a job opening?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
There, there was a notice during the summertime.
Oh.
And she was hired with, um, we had the knowledge that she would have her third year to complete. And then the state came back and said, yeah.
Any further discussion on this matter?
On this, but at some point I would like to understand our rehiring and hiring process, um, with teachers who have been in the district or not, um, because I actually did, by way of conversation, have three in our district. And I, I'm just trying to understand, they're, they're, um, they're no longer working in the district. They live in our district, but they can't get hired, supposedly. But I would like to understand that better.
I think maybe if you, um, you could talk to Lisa or myself. It could be individual circumstances.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
Things in the past that, I mean, we can't, uh, talk in an open session, of course, but-
Yep, of course. Yeah, I thought that, believe me, myself, I can say-
Definitely reach out.
Yeah. I, I don't have any questions about this one, no.
I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Um...
Go ahead.
Do you like, this, um, so we're proving to give her three more years or just this year?
This, this would be, yeah.
Did you? Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
This would be the last year that she'd be able to, yeah.
I didn't quite understand that part, but I agree with that.
Here are all ayes, ayes, yeses. The motion carries. Moving on to the, you did say yes, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just assuming she did. Uh, the LCSC MOU?
This is just a renewal of our yearly MOU with the LCSC to place student interns in our district.
Okay. Um, the MOU has a, uh, signing date of 2021, so just so you know.
That's, it's the one they sent to me, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, the dates within it are, you know, fall of twenty-three through fall of twenty-five. But in their, in witness whereof, the party's entered this, um, this day of twenty-one. Pops that out, so, yeah. It's been right here.
They must have copied and pasted and not, uh-
Yep. What do we do? Questions or concerns on the LCSC MOU? I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
A second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the UK MOU.
This is also is a renewal of the MOU you approved last year. Um, we have a former student, like, a high school graduate, six-year, seven-year Betty Kiefer kiddo that I had as, when I was a Betty Kiefer, who, uh, is looking to do his internship at council through this, and so we have to update the only issue.
Okay. Any questions, discussion, this debate? I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We all said aye. She, yeah, was late to the draw.
Aye. The wife.
But, yeah, she was there. Her being stay tired. Yes, we're, we're doing it. Um, motion asked. Uh, the city bathroom MOU, you took out paragraph J. And I believe, uh, so the board knows, this was signed by me at the last board meeting, but apparently it got thrown away, so we-
Not this one.
Not this one?
No, that was-
I was gonna say, I hope not, because we denied that because of the language that we needed.
Our county MOUs, they accidentally shredded one and wrote all over another one, and so we had to, had to have Michelle re-sign it.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So do we need to discuss the bathroom city MOU?
And Matt is here to talk if you, because you had also asked for the architect, you, Bob, had asked for the architectural designs, which are also linked into this document, so you can look at them.
Yeah. So it's two bathrooms and a concession stand?
Mm-hmm.
And... So it's gonna be along the fence line on Main Street? Is that accurate?
It's over in that corner where McDonald's.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know what that street on the back side of that is.
Main?
That's Main Street.
Oh, okay.
But it's actually, if it's in that grassy section, then it's not really on Main Street, so.
Where the board parties currently sit.
Okay.
There's not a physical address. We did, um, it literally just has the plot.
Right. Will it be inside, it'll be inside the fence, correct?
Correct.
And K-Tech students are actually building part of it?
I hope. This thing's taken so long, it's, that's the challenge now. I'm hoping I can keep people that have committed to this project early on. It's just the process. I was naivety and I thought you could just go slap up some bathrooms or, you know, and, but process has just taken so much longer, so.
So you've got-
I'm, I'm committed to the project, um, you know, and I think once we can get through the process piece, I know that we, we've had no problem getting people to partner up with us and join in on these projects. So I don't worry about that. I just, the process has taken so long that we've missed now a whole-
Right.
-whole year's worth of building to get this going, so.
Well, in, in all fairness, nothing was ever brought to the board about it until last month, so, um, I mean-
Yeah, and that's one, I guess, as we went through it throughout the summer, we would get to a step where we were thinking we could go next, then we were told, well, now you have to do this, and so-
Oh, gotcha, okay.
We couldn't have anticipated any of these things. It was just drawn out that, well, now you need to do this, and now you need to do this. And so as soon as you got something, that's as soon as we, that's what we had got, so.
Perfect. Any discussion on the city's MOU? I moved to approve the city of bathroom MOU for the restroom concession stand.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Just get it done, dude.
Moving on to the University of Idaho research project. A little perplexed by this, uh, research project, primarily because their collection timeframe has come and gone.
Yes, it has.
And, uh, it, it doesn't say anything in here about notifying parents. Um, or s- I mean, it, it implies that it's just the physical education educators that are, um, participating in this. Um, however, they're collecting data on students, and so there has to be permission from the parents. And it doesn't identify that anywhere in here. And I would like to know if they want to do this. I mean-
They, the PE teachers definitely do, um, want to participate.
Okay.
And, um, if the board allows us to work with the University of Idaho for this, then we will just enact our own policy, which is we're, we only survey, or we only, well, we will get permission from parents for kids to participate. Unless there, there are no, no names, but they are, they are looking at body composition, so height and weight, so that they can figure out body mass, so. The permission part is easy. It's just if the board wants to participate.
What are they gonna do with the data when they're done?
Well, they state that they are trying to establish a fitness testing recording system-
Right.
-for physical education.
Which is something that PE teachers actually, um, like to use right now, or they used to use. I'm not sure if they still do, but they used a program called Fitness Gram. And they took all of this, this data, kept the data on kids at the baseline at the beginning of the year. How long does it take you to run a mile at the end of the year? Can you do it in less than ten minutes? How many push-ups at the beginning? So they are constantly looking for a way to measure students' improvement in conditioning, so.
They do get the free software. It says they didn't keep all that if they participated.
And they get some training.
I just didn't know the university was gonna be able to use it for advocacy or, um, you know, will it get funding for it for email?
That was supposed to be some kind of template, whether we just insert date and send it off?
Yeah, insert date.
So they're using Fitness Gram to measure?
Which is what we've been using.
So we've been using Fitness Grams? So parents have already signed approvals?
Well, the, the Fitness Gram's just, it's just a database that allows them to input the baseline data and then, and then improvements over time for each of kids. It doesn't go anywhere. It's just, it's a software program for teachers to use.
Okay.
They can put the height and weight of kiddo in and it will give them the B M I.
So we already have this program?
We've been using Fitness Gram.
If we're already doing it.
They're trying to get, to see if they can get a, um, a group across the state. And I don't know if U of I's gonna then sponsor a Fitness Gram. I'm not sure what this is. I don't know what it's all about. I, uh, received this from two of our PE teachers who said that they would like to participate.
Well, given that this was for last year, is it even still relevant?
It is. They, they just got this document. They might just have, that might come in tight though. Or-
Or they did it last year and they just didn't update the form.
Exactly, because they didn't even put the data in versus inserting.
Yeah, so that is what they do. They do use it for advocacy. So as a member of the Cooper Institute, serves in a leadership position in numerous public health coalitions and work groups around the country, and we utilize our science and research to help guide our input on the numerous public health policies across the country. Um, we're a trusted voice on critical public health issues, driving force behind legislative solutions, removing barriers to, relating to physical activity, to providing schools much-needed resources for creating healthier environments. We work with all levels of government to bring about common sense health, public health policies that make living well into the future easier for everyone. So it reminds me when in school you had to run a mile, do some of the sets and, yeah, you had to do-
They used to do, it was the presidential fitness, remember, award that you would get at the end of the year? That we did those things, but, mm-hmm.
Pull-ups, you had to do all that, yeah.
Yeah. I was terrible at chin-ups.
I think all girls do it.
Any further discussion? Great. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with the premise of it, I just don't know what they're gonna do with it, and we're giving outdated information, as long as the parents are notified, but it's still like to know what the whole point of it is, if we already have the software and we're.
We're already tracking it.
Doing. Yeah.
Probably just so that they can collect the data in a bigger sample group, like statewide sample group, rather than, like, we have our district, but they're probably looking to gather it statewide.
Oh, gotcha.
Use the data for their advocacy.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, they're alleging the data is. The data that they're, I, I just, yeah, this is, they're saying participation in the study is voluntary, so, but they don't ever talk about getting the voluntary approval of the students that are going to be doing this. And that just bothers me because maybe.
Well, we can put that as our own thing and say.
Maybe they, maybe they just assume each district has their own parameters for how we get to participate.
I don't know, anytime you're collecting data and you're running, you know, you're supposed to disclose all that, I mean, kids should all get this, it, it's, it's a requirement, so, I, it just bothers me that they're not even doing that. But. All in our team motion.
I don't have enough information. It's outdated, it's all.
I was gonna say, I would need a one for the correct timeframe anyway, so.
Yeah. Or deny. Um, well, I would move that they come back, uh, deny this, that they come back with the appropriate timeframe and, what, I mean, what's the point of it? If we're collecting the data, you know, what are they gonna do with it then? I don't have any problem necessarily with the premise of it, but.
Could we just table pending, uh, a regraft and other information?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Can I, can I just point of clarification? We're going to go back to U of I and ask for those, do you want me to ask them to include their parent information?
Well, this came from, um, our teachers, our teachers, whoever brought this forward that wants to do this, I would think that they need to go.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna send this back to.
They're do the footwork and, yeah.
Yep.
Make it more, um, spread.
Okay, send it back their way.
So we have a motion and a second. All the favors say aye.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the Kootenai Tribe donation letter, um, Kootenai Tribe's given three thousand dollars to Lakeland School District for its staff and students.
They typically donate it to Lakeland Education Foundation, and all of the money that the, uh, foundation collects goes to student scholarships and teacher grants.
Do we ever write back to them to let them know? Cause every year they ask to be, you know, informed. Do they do that?
The foundation does.
Yeah, they do do that, okay.
I would move to accept the check and also ask that we send a letter thanking them graciously for their donation.
Second.
Yeah, um, can we amend that to grant the money to the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So we accept the letter and the money, we're going to, uh, transfer it over to the foundation, and we're going to send a letter of thank you and gratitude to the tribe.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and I believe you said a second.
Yeah.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, last item for, uh, action is the field house proposal for Timberlake High School. This is like totally awesome.
Yes, and Lakeland is working on its own version of this, um, both of them will be fully funded through, um, donations.
Okay.
It won't be a cost to our taxpayers, but our, um, it will provide opportunities for our kids to be active all year long, um.
Yeah, which is awesome.
Yeah.
Wanting to start practicing with other districts in our area, or even southern Idaho get to start practicing so much earlier.
Yeah, and then, uh, you know, in the fall, when, in August, when it's smoky and we have days where our cross-country kids can't run outside, or football players can't play outside, they have this indoor fieldhouse that they can practice in.
My only question on this is, for the fundraising plan, it states that all fundraising will go through the Lakeland School District?
They wanted to make sure that it doesn't, they don't want it to run through the district fund, they want it to, so they, it's district dollars, it's a district building, and so the donations will come to the district, and then Jessica will set and assign a special fund.
Okay, so it won't go into the general fund, it'll go into its own little world?
Yep.
Perfect.
It'll go into the general fund?
No, it won't.
It will not.
It'll have its own, the magic.
Whoa, whoa, to go into the general fund. Who can't use these dollars for something else?
So I just asked Ryan and Jimmy and Matt will bring forth theirs, um, before he gets too far down this path, and he's already talking to companies and that people are committing, I just, I just said, the board needs to give permission to move this project forward, so. That's why it's before each night.
I move to approve the Timberlake High School Field House facility proposal.
We have a motion and a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're being that predicament, we're staying.
Okay, do you not have enough information?
No, I don't.
Okay, well.
That's right.
No, 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 it's not.
Move on, move on.
Well, Bob, if more information needs to be presented, then we can, we should be asking for it.
Well, they, they've set five hundred thousand dollars as the cost, but I didn't see any information on how they arrived at that number.
Okay.
I just know from experience, uh, in the building industry, you can get really in a bad situation.
Post. Randy? Would you mind rescinding your motion so that we can table this for further information?
No, 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 let the motion, let the motion stand, but, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
I, I, I'm not in, uh, opposition to the idea.
Right.
Uh, but I would like to see more information, not only about that, but about the fundraising approach, but that's fine, go ahead.
Well, actually though, Bob, I think that's a great idea, because we don't know what they're going to be looking at as far as fundraising, and we've kind of been on opposite ends of the spectrum multiple times with fundraising this way is okay, fundraising that way is not okay, and there's not a lot of clarity, so I'm glad, what's that?
We're, we're definitely allowing fundraising.
I, I understand that, but are we selling rolls of wrapping paper? I mean, are we gonna compete for cookie dough with, you know, I just.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I appreciate that, because now that you've brought that to the table, yeah, there is more information we probably should have, not that we're going to, um, not approve this, but we could approve it with follow-up on, you know, how are we securing the bids, how, you know, what are you doing to make sure that this is gonna sustain itself without depending on the district? And what type of fundraising?
We have a piece that went through my mind, there's at least I made the comment that, you know, Lakeland is drawing with the same idea, so whatever we do here kind of sets a precedent for the next round.
Right. Correct.
Well, and the way I see it is, we're approving this proposal to start working on the pro- we're not approving the project, we're, we're approving the proposal.
So he can.
Right.
So that he can start collecting the information, more information. That's, that's my understanding of what this is for.
I can ask him to, yeah, I can ask him to provide, if the board is comfortable with the project idea, I can ask Ryan to provide, uh, monthly updates to the board with specific information.
It says it's a.
Right.
And, for example, I know he's working, he's been talking to a company, I think it might be Stantra, I know Lakeland was talking to Stantra.
I bet a lot of companies.
More is better, you never know.
Better deal. The dollar amount came from working with somebody who.
Northwest Structures is who he, is the only company that's responded so far, yeah.
So, that's, that's who he, that's who, where he got the estimate of the cost, it's from the builder.
Okay.
So, I can, I mean, this is a, it's a district project, it's all funded through donations, but we still have to go out to bid.
It would have to go to bid and all of.
You guys have to figure all of that.
Right.
I just didn't want him to go too far down the rabbit hole without bringing the board into his head.
Yeah.
And what, what he is trying. So, with your permission, he will move forward with.
I will maintain my motion to.
You don't have to, it's already.
Oh, oh, yeah. I'm just, I was asked to reiterate at one point, so I'm just, just reiterating.
You're reiterating.
Do you still wish to abstain?
That's fine, go ahead, just move on.
Are you still abstaining?
Keep moving.
Yeah, okay, so for favor, one abstained, and the motion passes, but the board does need to be updated on a, a regular basis, be it monthly or whatnot, and I would like to have an understanding of what type of fundraising they'd like to pursue, um.
He's talking, I know he's talking to big corporations.
Okay.
For donations.
And that's totally great, but if we're gonna start peddling wrapping paper.
No, we're not right now.
You never know, people get creative, I just wanna know.
Cause it's a good, that's a lot of wrapping paper.
I know, but it's a valid point, I mean, it's, it's a very valid point, that we should have insight into, so that. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, what he laid out is pretty aggressive.
Yeah.
Fundraising stuff.
Right.
He's already talking to those companies, they've already verbally committed to money.
Well, unless it's wet.
We don't have any, right, we don't, because it hasn't been approved yet, but he's, he already has people, groups who are saying, we will help you make this, um, provision.
Signatures. Right.
Timberlake High School's in the same loop.
And if U of I has this fitness program, they might have some connections that can help out.
Help with some grant funding.
They're gonna give a gift certificate.
Yeah, hundred and fifty dollars a piece.
But here's the, but here's the thing, it's like DC, right, it's all about who you know, DC's a town of money and influence, it's all about who you know, and U of I knows lots of people.
Yep.
Yeah, so that would be great to have, other people have conversations that could help benefit our district. Right, so that concludes our action items, um, moving on to discussion, we have, um, the Long Range Planning Committee update.
That was just the August eighteen, or fifteen change.
Okay.
Facility, we already talked about that, right, they're gonna find a date and.
Yeah.
Right?
Send it to us, let that.
Um, the fall activity drug testing, um. So, students were found with nicotine and amphetamine.
What? Yep.
Hmm.
And we tested, uh, fifty at, oh, no.
Wait.
Fifty at both high schools because, um, fall sports have such large teams, so, um, we'll, we'll test the smaller number in fallen, or winter, sorry.
Could you please ask Katie to provide numbers similar to Lakeland's?
Did she not do it?
No, we've asked before.
Did I answer that question? Okay. What do you want to do?
Well, we need.
The, the.
Uh, I'll just share Lakeland's with her so she can see the format, but.
How that does shows which, which sport and how many.
Ten football players.
Or extra curriculars.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will.
And were any other, no other activities? All just athletes?
Um, it was all, uh, random, but based on whichever extracurricular activities are happening right now, so there are some that don't start until later in the year.
Okay.
But they were all in there yet.
Um, I have great concern over amphetamine. I have. What do we do with those students?
Um, I. It, it wasn't F amphetamines, it's just amphetamines, and.
Bow.
And, right, I know, I know, but they're, I mean, I, I don't know, I guess that's.
I mean, it could have been a lot of things, it could have been SuFet.
Exactly.
Right?
Exactly.
But, I mean, yeah, that gives me major heartburn.
I can follow up, I have to follow up with her anyway on putting the numbers in, so I will follow up with her and find out if, what they determined the amphetamines from, and what we did about it.
I appreciate that.
But it, it never come to me as a drug issue, so.
Amphetamines can also be ADHD meds.
Right, yeah.
And do it, you know, when, when we have four and four positives, how many were nicotine, how many were amphetamine?
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah, was it three in one?
More specific on, yeah, the more specific on those numbers as well, the more of a breakdown on those.
This video sets never come up before.
Yep, I know, I saw that. Okay.
All right, any further conversation on the, or discussion on the fall activities, drug testing results? Okay. Cooper baseball field, so.
This was IDJ.
This was IDJ, and ironically, Mr. Jones, it was signed, we have a document that was signed in nineteen ninety-nine, deeding the property over to the city, Harry Selby signed it, but the district never recorded it, so it was, the document was signed, notarized, and never recorded.
Now, we're providing a quick claim deed to the city, right?
It, it, it was, it was never recorded.
It was their job to record it, not ours.
Right, well, this joint powers.
The receiving party records.
Oh, well, it never got recorded, so we deeded it over, and then it, this county doesn't have it.
This joint powers agreement that was shared was recorded.
It's recorded right up in the top corner.
Yeah.
But the, the county still has the property listed as Lakeland Joint School District ownership, and it should be listed as the city.
Just keep it that way.
So, the city is just wanting us to work with them to get it rectified, I'm, I'm not sure when that, we're gonna take it at this point, but.
It's not moving in my additional pages this time, I read through it earlier today. Uh, it's not, I'm not moving about the pages now.
They didn't record it, it's there.
Yep.
Yeah, this agreement is recorded, but if there was a quick claim deed, it's not part of this agreement, and the land is not specified, so they wouldn't.
The legal description is in there.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Very, and the last two pages.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, it's got the recording stamp on the legal description page. Oh, like, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Didn't make the vote.
So they've taken this document to the county and asked them?
Um, yes, I believe so, but I think for them to move forward, they needed us to work alongside them, so if you're okay with that, I will work with Leon to get this remedied.
What is he offering?
Um. Continued support of the school district.
Not for something that was already clearly negotiated.
No, he's wanting more concessions.
He is, they are helping us with the concession stand.
It does, I mean, it states in here for the compensation that, um, the district agrees to quit clean to the city, the property known as John Brown Ball Field and identified as Exhibit A.
Right.
So.
Exhibit A is the late legislature.
Correct. So, I mean, there's no reason, I, if we've, according to Bob, already done the quit clean deed and they can't seem to find it, cause it never got recorded, well, it sounds like they need to do a new quit clean deed.
The interesting thing is, this document got recorded with the return address to the city of Rathdron.
Right.
Which means they got the quit clean deed too.
Yeah, somebody has it, had it.
Right, and somebody forgot to take it to the courthouse after the state council signed it and went up.
They probably would've been filed in conjunction with each other, like one due. I would, I would look up, uh, document one five four, or one five eight four two oh four. Because this would've had to have been recorded first.
Okay, where did you get that number?
Well, it's on the side of the document, that's the recording.
Oh, the one five eight four two.
The instrument number. Yeah.
Hey. So.
Because if, I mean, you pulled that number and there's the deed, you probably solved it, but.
Well, you pull up that number and the deed says Lakeland High School at the cam.
Pull up, can you pull up document number one five eight four two seven? Or how we go forward?
I don't know if they pulled it up that way, if we pulled up property, the property show's still like. So I will ask, I will hook Leon and pull that up and then figure out if we have to bring another quit clean.
Uh, please, I've been working with Megan on this, I just don't have an update.
But it sounds like we need to.
There's a train, I can't hear you. Sorry.
She also, she was looping Megan in to make sure that this is all listed. But it's all been notarized, it's been filed, it's.
I, I don't have a phone. It's just a little bit of a phone.
Hey. You asked us to do our new billings, we just looked into that, which we did, and so that's what we found.
Good job.
Jessica took the, took the lead, she, she did dig in, she did find a box of old papers that's typed on that really fine, like almost rice paper.
Nineteen sixty.
Tissue paper. Is that what that's called?
That's what the issue is for, carbon.
Yeah.
Carbon cut, carbon.
Yep. And it's so faint that, uh, in order to get it to print, Rebecca had to put a piece of paper behind it to make it, show a little bit brighter so we could get a copy. We did find those documents.
Good to know they're still here.
Mm-hmm, yeah. They're lots of them.
Good job. So this was a document we had, or is this a document the city gave us?
That was a document the city gave us. Leon had that.
Okay.
I did have a map, I just didn't have any documents to go with a map.
Nice.
Yeah.
Ask Leon the last time that joint board met.
Do you want to power board?
You think he's gonna know?
It's in the document.
As I said, just go get Kim's machine, I bet you the quit clean deeds on her machine or this one's on the M drive.
It's all, it's all there. Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Okie dokie. Moving on to the, uh, LHS player and parent manual. Timberlake had done one of these, Lakeland had one that wasn't really paralleling. So, um, Lakeland took Timberlake's and has paralleled it so that both high schools are representing the same information.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So that was just brought back to us to look at.
You had asked us to do that one Timber, because you were so impressed with Timberlake since, so we just wanted you to know that we followed through.
That's awesome. Any other? Okay. Last item for discussion is the RDA documentation, not really, but kinda.
That's what we get, let's see. So we brought this, um, trustee Grissom had asked the question, do we have anything that says that, uh, we're supposed to keep our student population for special ed at ten percent of our, our overall student population? So I asked Kelsey, um, we don't, it's not a written commandment or anything, but, um, do you want to just kind of explain where that number came from?
Yeah, the number originated from our significant disproportionality, so it's kind of like a ten percent that we're not over identifying any race or gender or actual, um, specific category. So that's where like the overall ten percent came from, so it's been talked about for many, many years. School districts shouldn't be over ten percent, but it was misleading in that sense of the direction people were taking it. Um, and so that just is our significant disproportionality report is where that comes from. National average right now for, um, students in special education population is well above fourteen percent. And currently we're right around thirteen, so we are below it right now, currently. Um, Nash, or Idaho, right now is at twelve percent, um, average.
Yeah, I just found it interesting that they could say, oh, no, you can only have ten percent of your population, especially with today's kids, it's like, are you serious?
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
So in some, in some districts you'll see, um, significant disproportionality is weighted and, um.
Yeah.
We got a, a perfect score, but there are some districts that their weight is a little bit because of culture differences, um, compared to others. And so in this one, we're, we're, we're good. Um, but they do look at that, we do have to report those numbers, cause they wanna make sure we're not over identifying.
Right, right, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't think they could write that in stone, it's like, you can't, I mean, sorry, but you have too many disability people at your place of employment, I mean.
The one area that, yeah.
It'd be the same thing, you know?
The one area they do give us a percentage is that we can't have over one percent of our students take the ISAT alt. Um, and that is the one area that they have given us guidelines on.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the information, you know, it's awesome, appreciate it.
Any other comments or discussion on that? Moving on to the meeting with local legislators.
We just need a head count so that Olivia knows whether or not we need to post a quorum.
I think, it's a Friday.
It's Friday the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. Bob's, I shall, saw he was going, I did confirm that I would go, I put it on my calendar.
Yep. We just didn't want to assume that the other three weren't and then have.
Well, I think it, it may be more beneficial just to post a form notice and then if it happens, great, and if it doesn't, we're at least covered. So I know Dave wants to come. All right, trustee dinner.
Make sure you put that on the, on our budget.
She's checking, Al.
Yeah.
But that should go on our budget, yes.
No. What's our budget?
Five dollars, ten thousand less than it was when we started the meeting.
Maybe it's ten thousand more, because it's actually moving over and. Um, yeah, we, I partied Dave when he walked in and he said his wife would check into things and tomorrow, maybe or the next day, he could get us information.
Do you want me to just tell Lisa or you?
Um, you can let the clerk know and she can send an email out to all of us with what was found out. Or, or a text message, prefer an email, it's probably too much to text. And of course, I mean, Lisa too, but she's got a job. Um, any items, oh, there's no action after discussion. Dates to remember, uh, the SIP was due on October one, we sent it September twenty-seventh.
Woo-hoo.
And, uh, yeah, the legislative meeting is the twenty-seventh at two thirty. Any future agenda items, uh, to be put on the agenda?
I would like to discuss doing a, having a protocol for projects, so that we don't run into a situation where we don't have a bond.
Performance bond?
Performance bond.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be good.
Make sure that we have a contract for every project.
Right.
So I, I think that some kind of.
So our project procedures. Okay.
Checklist of some sort that.
Everybody can access and know what's expected.
Yes. And just know, yeah.
Agreed.
With, um, Matt's concession stand project, there was issues where he, you know, not necessarily his fault.
Right, right, right.
I understand there were some city, city issues there too.
City stuff.
Yeah. So, um, but yeah, I think it would be a good.
Okay.
Thing to. Good value.
Would we like to delegate that to someone to bring back to us?
Certainly.
Okay, okay. Just checking.
I will write that back, I will work with Dr. Pasley, who's really good at writing protocols, and Jessica and Mike.
And I would say, and Mike.
Yeah, definitely.
Making sure that he's always in the loop.
Yeah, and he knows.
Just from start to finish, all the steps that.
I mean, if something should already exist, are you telling me that nothing exists to do this?
Well, we have a policy, I guess, that we follow, but as far as, do we have a performance bond?
The procedures to make sure that.
Do we have a contract?
Everything doesn't fall through the crack.
Obviously, there's, there's something that was missing, so we wanna make sure we don't miss it again.
Into the abyss.
Well, I mean, I still have a hard time believing that there isn't.
Something.
I think that even if there were, that they just weren't followed, cause, you know, people just knew how it was supposed to go.
Or didn't want it.
Well, and maybe that's part of our procedures, that we get follow-ups.
Right.
To see that checklist.
Right.
Once a project is started, we see that checklist every month.
So you can see exactly where we are in the process.
To see what's happening.
Exactly.
Just like any other graduate job, there's a punch list.
Anything else?
Um, just did, because I didn't get the agenda amended, um, for the, um, parents' rights resolution.
Okay.
So I have to move it to November, I guess.
Can you put that on the November agenda for, um, the approval of a parents' rights resolution?
I assume that there was something else too, I don't know. I don't remember now.
I don't have anything else. Okay, anybody else? All right, on that note, I'll go ahead and gall us out, meeting is adjourned, it's nine forty-seven. All right.